Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Los Angeles City Council's regularly scheduled meeting. Today is March 24th, 2006, and we are here in City Hall Chambers in John Ferraro Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall. And these meetings are open to the public and broadcast on Channel 35. We invite folks to come down here for public testimony, in general public comment, or on specific items before us. We also invite folks to come down to Van Nuys City Hall, where we have the capability of taking your testimony via remote from Van Nuys City Hall, and that is on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays at 10:00. We're being broadcast on Channel 35, which is LA City View, your city's cable channel. For those of you who do not have cable, you can get us on webcast through our city's homepage at www.lacity.org, where there's a wealth of information about your elected officials and your government, and a number of links there to the City Council. We are also broadcast through a council phone, which is a number you can call to hear the proceedings of the City Council and our committees. The easiest of those numbers is 213-621-CITY, C-I-T-Y, in which you can hear the proceedings of the City Council. Each Friday, we have special presentations for members of the community and notable figures and organizations that have made an impact on Los Angeles. I want to, before we start those presentations, thank Councilmembers Grul, Wezar, Labange, and Zine for being here. When we have 10 members present, we will have a quorum that will constitute two-thirds in a quorum, and we will run through part of the agenda. And so I'd like to ask the councilmembers Parks, Cardenas, Councilmember Smith, Reyes, Rosendahl, Councilmember Perry, Councilmember Wesson, Councilmember Hahn, Councilmember Grul, to, oh, sorry, Ms. Grul is here. She was the first one here. The others to make their way down, Mr. Padilla as well. So with that, I'd like to recognize first Councilmember Jose Wezar from the 14th District to make the first presentation. Mr. Wezar.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I'm very proud to be here today with the National Varsity Cheer Competition Champs from Roosevelt High School in Boyle Heights. They were the 2006 Jams National Champs in Las Vegas, and the Roosevelt High School Varsity Advanced Stunt Group placed second. I can't tell you how proud I am of these young athletes for going out to Las Vegas, not only representing their proud community of Boyle Heights, but also the city of Los Angeles as they received the honors of being the champs for 2006. And these young athletes had to come over a few obstacles to be where they're at today. First and foremost, they had to fundraise to be able to go to Las Vegas. I was proud to have helped them, sponsored them to get to Vegas, to make sure we could show our very own proud team from Roosevelt High School to be in the competition. And also, as you know, these young athletes, it takes a lot to do the stunts they do, and some of them went out there to Las Vegas with a few injuries, but despite the injuries, they were able to pull it off and become the national champs. So we're very proud today to present them to the City Council, to the city of Los Angeles, to show the pride we have in East Los Angeles and Boyle Heights, and their achievement for being the national champs. Let me first invite up one of these young athletes, the team captain, Erica Alatriste, who will share a few words with you. Erica?
Hi, well, I just wanted to thank Jose Wezar for donating money and all the other sponsors, and also our coach for helping us succeed and go to Las Vegas, and also, I'm proud of the team because we went through a lot of hardships and we overcame all of that. And I've been a cheerleader for four years, and we've never accomplished anything so big, and we've always seen all the other squads, and we always said, "Oh, we could do that too," and with this year, finally, we became national champs, and I'm so proud of the team. Thank you.
Congratulations, Erica, and thank you so much. Also with us today is their coach, Myrna Ramirez, who coaches this team alone, and we know how tough that could be. It's a real challenge. She's also a Roosevelt High School graduate, class of '97, right? Please welcome the coach, Myrna Ramirez.
Good morning. I want to thank Jose Wezar for allowing us to come down to City Hall today. Like Erica said, this is the first year I coached the team, and I came in around September, and I managed to combine the team this year, and luckily, we were able to go to Nationals in Las Vegas and succeed. We had a lot of support from our community, and in the beginning, a lot of our parents and community and teachers, they thought that, didn't have much expectations for the team, but we proved them wrong, and we managed to succeed. So I want to thank every single girl on the team, regardless of the injuries that we faced, we managed to succeed. So congratulations and thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, we know that we have one of the most talked-about high school rivalries in football each and every year here in Los Angeles with the East L.A. Classic, where the Roosevelt Rough Riders play, the Garfield Bulldogs. Unfortunately, Garfield won this past year, right? But we're here today saying that we got their national championship in cheerleading here at Roosevelt High School, and we're very proud of that. It was a good game, almost as good as the championship between Igorock and Mr. Labange's favorite team, Marshall. But let me now, with the permission of the council and our council president, if they could give us a quick little cheer of, and we'll see why, they won this national championship.
We'd expect nothing less, Mr. Wezar, please.
Thank you very much. We know that in our schools today, we not only promote children and students to learn in the classroom, but the extracurricular activities, as we all know, teaches our students about leadership, teamwork, and certainly, other skills that would lead them to a life and whatever they choose to do. But with that, I also would like to recognize each of these athletes individually for their contribution to this great team, and I'd first like to call up the captain, Erica Alatriste.
Yes.
Erica? Julissa Acosta. Jackie Bolanos. Laura Castaneda. Anna Coverrubias. Anna Fonseca. Jessica Godoy. Ilse Gonzalez. Marlene Lada. Vanessa Morakin. Lynn Orozco. Dana Renteria. Yelitza Rodriguez. Sochil Solis. Cindy Suchit. And Maria Valenzuela. Oh, and the coach, certainly, last but not least, Rough Rider herself, Myrna Ramirez. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, appreciate it. Our next presentation will be led by a man from John Marshall High School, the council member from CD4, Tom Labange.
Mr. President, good morning, members of the council, to the public. That was wonderful seeing Roosevelt High School. Let's give Roosevelt High School another hand for those great programs that they have for cheerleading, which is so important. This morning, members, I'm pleased to give an anniversary commendation to a very special organization, Park La Brea News. Park La Brea News has been founded in 1946, and in January of 1990, Michael and Karen Villapano, step right up here. I said that incorrectly, didn't I?
Veopondo.
Veopondo, I said that faster than I should have. Michael and Karen purchased the newspaper in 1990, and it was converted to a weekly newspaper, informing the public in the greater, what we'd say, the Fairfax area, Park La Brea area, Miracle Mile area, of what is going on in their community. As we all know, members, a local newspaper really gives the information to the public about what's going on in their community, and the Park La Brea News just does that. The Beverly Plus was launched in 1991 to expand its circulation to include West Hollywood, Hancock Park, and as well as the other districts of the Miracle Mile and Fairfax District. Over the last 16 years, it's delivered a high quality of local news reporting in a timely manner to the community. The staff and contributing writers, very well-trained journalists, have worked hard to get their stories out every week and prove the news to the public, which is so important, and information that sometimes the big major dailies do not cover at all, or choose not to cover at all. The Park La Brea News has supported many local events throughout the community, such as the art festivals that they have, Russian Nights of Cultural Festival in West Hollywood, and also, they're very involved with, I know, something that's dear to many of us, Homeboy Industries here in Los Angeles. So with all of you signing this, as well as our mayor, Mayor Vera Ragosa, it's my pleasure, Michael and Karen, to present you this 60th Anniversary Resolution to salute the Park La Brea News for being great journalists, for making a difference, for impacting the lives of people, because I know I get a lot of calls from people who read the story in your newspaper, what's happening in their community, asking for a better community, and you inform them. So let's give the Park La Brea News a big hand.
Okay, Michael? First of all, Tom, thank you very much for this. We very much appreciate it. I want to thank our staff and our contributing writers, Ed Fulvin, our editor, Janet Turley, our staff writers, Shirley Firestone, the restaurant critic, as well as Madeline Shane, are one of our columnists. These are the people that make it happen for us every week, and we're very grateful to them. I want to thank my wife, who I have the very good fortune of being able to work with every day. I want to thank my kids for being patient when mommy and daddy have to be working at the office kind of late sometimes.
Emily and Rebecca.
Emily and Rebecca, Emily and Rebecca. I want to thank the advertisers who support the newspaper by trusting us to get their message out, but most of all, I want to thank the readers, because these are the people that let us know when we get something wrong or miss it, but they're also kind enough to let us know when we get it right, and for that, we're very grateful. Thank you.
Thank you, yeah, thank you.
I just want to add quickly, so next Thursday, March 30th, the 60th Anniversary Issue will be coming out, and your esteemed colleague here will be, have a nice story about him and what he does for our neighborhood in there, and I hope you all get a chance to pick it up and read it.
Thank you. If I may, Mr. Labange, if I might just add my congratulations as well, I know you have great coverage of my council district as well, and I know that so many people really enjoy a little further to the east, your great coverage of Hollywood and Silver Lake and those areas, and in a time when there are fewer and fewer neighborhood papers that really have the substance behind them, you invest in the stories and the reporters and things that we never read in other papers, bigger or smaller, so we really appreciate your great work, and congratulations on your anniversary.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, members. Let's give everybody from Park La Brea News a big hand. Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Cardenas, Grul, Hahn, Wezar, Labange, Padilla, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 12 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, colleagues, we're just going to run through the agenda real quick and then return to our presentations, first order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Okay, Mr. Wesson moves, and Mr. Zine seconds. If there's no objection, that will be unanimous vote, and they are approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Okay, Mr. Rosendahl moves, and Mr. Labange seconds. If there's no objection, that too is unanimously approved.
Mr. President, do you wish to do public comment at this time, or go through the agenda?
Let's hold that on the desk for a moment.
First items on the agenda are items for which public hearings have been held, items one through five. Item one is confirmation of a commissioner. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes, let's hold the commissioner on the desk, please.
Then before council is items two through five.
Okay, colleagues, two through five, anybody wishing to call any of those items special? Two through five?
And just to let council know, on item number four, the report has been submitted and distributed to the council members, and there are two reports on item number five, however, council can adopt both if it wishes.
Okay. I'm sorry, there are two on number four?
I'm sorry.
Couldn't quite hear.
On number five, there are two, and the report has been submitted on number four.
Okay, Mr. Parks?
I didn't hear what you said on the, on number five.
There's two reports.
Both of them?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Okay, we'll move both of those. If nobody's wishing to call any of those special, please prepare the roll on those items and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Okay, next items?
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items six through 41.
Six through 41, okay, do we have any cards on those?
There's a card on item number 40.
Okay, let's call that special. Six through 41, colleagues, any other specials? Any other special items, going once, going twice? If not, let's open the roll on the balance, close the roll and tabulate, oh, hold on one.
12 eyes.
Okay, did you have a special, Mr. Parks?
We have a substitute motion on 20 circulating.
Okay, let's, let's open the roll on reconsideration of 20.
And also, Mr. Smith asks for 38 to be returned to committee.
Okay, let's reconsider both of those, excuse me. Okay, okay, close that roll, then entabulate the vote previously, okay? If that's now been done, let's open the roll on reconsideration of 20 and 38, close the roll, and tabulate the vote. Okay, those are... We're just on reconsideration of those two. Okay, and close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Okay, 20 and 38, we will also call special. 38, you wanted to send back to committee, Mr. Smith. Is there any objection, colleagues, to sending 38 back to committee? If not, let's open the roll on that, close the roll, and tabulate the, or let you send it back.
That was a Rule 16 motion, which committee?
Okay.
Arts, Parks, and...
Arts, Parks, okay. If there's no objection, we'll just, we will consider that. Be unanimous vote, okay? That is sent back, we'll hold 20 and 40 special, and on the balance of the items?
There is an item number 42, and that's an item for which public hearing has been held, the report has been submitted and distributed to the council members.
Okay, anybody wishing to call 42 special? If not, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote on that.
12 eyes.
42 is approved. Next items?
That would take council back to the items called special.
Okay, let's hold those on the desk, and let's return to our presentations, and next, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Wendy Grul from the 2nd Council District.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm so pleased to be here today, colleagues, in declaring March 24th as the Second Annual Mediation Day in the city of Los Angeles. As I stated last year, it is my hope that we can continue to increase public awareness and encourage people to utilize mediation alternatives rather than going to court. And I know, we know all too well, in this city, that we'd rather go to mediation than go to court nine times out of 10, but going to court usually costs more money, it costs time away from your families and the things that you enjoy doing most. Mediation is the confidential and voluntary process in which a neutral third party facilitates communication between people to resolve their disputes. In this city, mediation is made available through the City Attorney's Dispute Resolution Program, and it's a free service funded by the County of Los Angeles. Over 1,200 trained volunteers, our mediators, are available to help resolve some of these disputes. As a member of the Audits and Government Efficiency Committee with my colleagues, it is my goal to improve efficiency in all areas of government, and I believe that the promotion of this service will not only benefit the residents of Los Angeles through a fair and quick and free process, but will also alleviate some of the congestion in our judicial system. And that is why today, we are declaring this the Second Annual Mediation Day in the city of Los Angeles. Some of the people who have made this day possible and who are the leaders in the mediation movement, I'll call it here in Los Angeles, is Harry Chamberlain, who is the, representing the Defense Bar and President of Association of Southern California Defense Council, Paul Kiesel, who is representing the Plaintiff's Bar and Emeritus Lifetime Board Member of Consumer Attorneys Association of Los Angeles, Dan Benzve, who's the chairman of the Mediation Day, Avis Ridley Thomas, which many of us know well, is the head of the City Attorney's Dispute Resolution Program, Max Factor III, who is the president of the Southern California Mediation Association, Jan Frankelshau, who is president-elect of the Southern California Mediation Association, Stephen Mason, who is the former president of the California, Southern California Mediation Association, and Natalie Armstrong, who is the former board member of Southern California Mediation Association. I have proclamations, and before I present them, I'd like to acknowledge Dan Benzve and other individuals for brief remarks regarding Mediation Day in the city of Los Angeles.
Okay, thank you very much, Wendy, and thank you, members of the City Council. Mediators, like politicians, bring divergence, divergent interests into common ground. That's what we do, it's such a critical benefit to Los Angeles and California. Let me focus on one thing. Right now, as I speak, over 1,000 mediations are taking place in rooms across Los Angeles. By the end of today, professional mediators will succeed in getting the parties and guiding the parties to reach resolutions on their own, unlike arbitration, court, or jury trial, and the solutions sometimes are creative. There's not just a winner or loser. The other day, I had a mediation where parties were in a vicious lawsuit. By the end of one day, the parties creatively reached a partnership agreement with my guidance. I am so honored to have with us, supporting here, the heads of the Plaintiff Bar, the Trial Lawyers Association, the head of the Defense Bar, and all these wonderful mediators, and I'm going to turn over, and the City Attorney's Office, I'm going to turn over the floor to them for some brief remarks, thank you very much. Paul Kiesel, the Plaintiff's Bar.
President Garcetti, City Council, I'm going to do the wise mediation manner and yield my time to the defense.
They always do that, actually, they never do that. 98% of all cases that go through the judicial process, which is a coercive process, end up in settlement. The remaining 2%, after something's gone terribly wrong for one side or both, end up settling as well. Our friends in the professional mediation community provide a great public service in allowing parties to maintain in their own hands their own destiny and to achieve outcomes like Dan was talking about here just a moment ago. They deserve to be recognized, and thank you, Councilmember Grul, for doing so.
Thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Max Factor, and president of Southern California Mediation Association. I wanted to recognize leaders in our community who happen not to be here. We have a very diverse community. Najiba Said Miller is with the Western Justice Foundation. She's on maternity leave right now, and I'm looking forward to getting back, because we have a number of programs where we're working together. The Asian Pacific American Dispute Center, Sophia Mei Ling Chang, and I can't pronounce her first name, but Ju Yote, I apologize, I got it wrong, Nanda is a co-chair, and Charles Chang is the executive director. The Community Action Program in Riverside, which I was at yesterday, won the National Award of Excellence, the only community action program, and it is a very diverse group. Two African-Americans have headed that program, and out of hundreds of community action programs, Dana Lofton and Lois won this award. Sentinel Youth Services and Martin Luther King Dispute Resolution Center, been around for years, providing local service, Nancy McMurray is the director there. Everybody here probably knows Esther Soriano, because she's the go-to person for funding in the dispute resolution field. And the Korean-American Dispute Resolution Coalition, I think it's 429 Center, Cara Inai Carlisle heads up. And so this is not only extraordinary in that we're working towards conflict resolution, but this is an extraordinarily diverse group of local people who've learned techniques of peacemaking, and in every community throughout Southern California, as Dan said, 1,000 or more today, are working to make things happen in a peaceful way. Thank you.
On behalf of the 1,500 mediators who are volunteers who are trained to serve the city, I want to thank the council and Wendy Grul for recognizing the efforts. I want to also talk about, very briefly, the attorneys in our office who have contacted us to start, including mediation clauses in the city contracts. I want to also recognize the accomplishments of the dispute resolution program having been given the Outstanding Project Award seven times over the past recent years. So thank you very much, this is essential to the city, and in fact, one of our deputy city attorneys who supervises a criminal unit told me that she believes that about 25% of those cases, minor criminal matters, are also appropriate for mediation, so we will be talking to the mayor's office, members of the council, about that possibility in future years. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And in concluding remarks, I just want to say, again, direct your attention to the over 1,000 mediations that will be settled today with, the far majority that will be settled by professional mediators today. I want to focus the attention of this City Council on the great benefits to the parties, the alleviation of stress, time, money, and also, to the city, could you imagine how many courtrooms and juries are precluded from having to be implemented and used because those cases are being settled, those disputes are being resolved today? Thank you very much, and final word is, going to trial or arbitration before trying mediation is like jumping into surgery before trying medication. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And if we could just give them all a great round of applause for supporting Mediation Day in the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you very much, Ms. Grul. Our next presentation will be from council member from the 15th District, Ms. Janice Hahn.
Thank you. Hopefully by the music, the fight song, you'll know that I am honoring today several athletes from the San Pedro High School.[632.58][632.58](Applause). As you'll be able to tell from this presentation, the Pirates have been very busy winning city championships and making all of us in San Pedro proud. Okay, see a lot of guys. Actually, the first one I was going to do is girls volleyball. Girls, come on up.[653.04][653.04](Applause). I want to introduce to you the girls volleyball team from San Pedro High School. They won the city invitational final for Division II in November. This final was played at Occidental College, and even more impressive, this is their second straight L.A. City Championship.[676.13][676.13](Applause). I played volleyball in high school. I was actually MVP in my senior year for my volleyball team. So altogether now, girls rule.[690.01][690.01](Laughter). Coach Christina Coomer is here today. And Coach, I am so honored to present you this official City of Los Angeles plaque on behalf of almost 4 million people in the City of Los Angeles congratulating the San Pedro High School Girls Volleyball Team on your city final victory. Congratulations. Where's the coach? There you are.
Hi, thank you.
And why don't you say a few words?
Hello, everybody. I am extremely proud of these young ladies. They are not only incredible athletes, but also incredible students, and they have lovely personalities. And these girls are extremely hardworking, and they definitely deserve this. So, go Pedro Pirates.[732.13][732.13](Applause).
Congratulations. Let's hear it again for the girls volleyball team from San Pedro High School. Congratulations.[740.13][740.13](Applause). Okay, now I'd like to bring forward Steve Calice from the San Pedro High School Cross Country Team. Steve won the city section individual cross-country title. He's a junior at San Pedro High School, and he's the first young man in the school's history to win this event. And he now owns, holds the school record. He ran the 2.9 mile course, almost three miles, in 15 minutes 21 seconds. That's amazing. Let's hear it for Steve Calice.[780.13][780.13](Applause). Where's Steve? Steve, congratulations on behalf of the City of Los Angeles for this great victory and again giving honor and pride to San Pedro. Would you like to say a few words?[794.32][794.32](Laughter). Okay, just keep running. Coach Bruce Thompson's here. Coach, is Bruce here?
Yeah.
Oh, here, let me give you your, let me give you your, congratulations. Coach, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you very much. I owe it all to Steve to be up here today. Hopefully next year, our team will be up here. We were second and third this year, and we appreciate the City Council honoring us today. And actually, we have a presentation from Steve from you.
All right. All right.
One of our cross-country shirts for Councilwoman Hahn, when she works out now.
Awesome, when I walk out. Right.
Thank you very much.
See you at Valley's.[835.13][835.13](Applause). Thank you. And now?
Sorry, I forgot, I actually forgot to present it to you. We actually got you a shirt, too, and since you were a volleyball player?
Yeah.
I'm sure you'd be happy that it has a volleyball shirt.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. And now I'd like to call up the San Pedro High School Boys Basketball Team. I also played basketball when I was in high school. Actually, that was my best sport. San Pedro Basketball Team also won the city section invitational championship. Forward Jeremy Holland, a senior, helped lead the Pirates to victory with 16 points, 11 rebounds, three steals during the championship game at the L.A. Sports Arena. The final score of the game against Cleveland High School was 54 to 49. That was a real close game. We're really glad the Pirates won. This is the Pirates' first city title in basketball since 1952, and they finished the season with 21 wins and seven losses, and they have set a record of three straight 21, 20-win seasons. Congratulations. Honored to present this plaque to Coaches John Bobic and McClinton Neal on behalf of the City of Los Angeles. Congratulations to the San Pedro High School Boys Basketball Team on your Los Angeles City Invitational Victory. Congratulations. Hey, how you doing?[925.73][925.73](Applause). Would you like to say a few words?
Behind me here are the 2006 L.A. City Invitational Champions. They were champions off the court, too, as they have a 3.1 GPA as a group, so that's very good. They're all from San Pedro, homebred. We're very proud of the young man behind us. And Jeremy and Shay, we'd like to present Mrs. Hahn with a, after her workout, she's going to need a sweatshirt. So Jeremy and Shay, if you could make the presentation.
All right.
So there's a sweatshirt for Mrs. Hahn.
Thank you. All right, I will wear that with pride. Thank you.[965.44][965.44](Laughter). Well, congratulations to these fine young men and women. They certainly give me bragging rights down here at the City Council, so congratulations. I have certificates for every one of you. We'll go in the back, and I'll present them to you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Hahn.
Congratulations to all of you.
And we knew that you were an MVP long before you told us, so.[983.23][983.23](Laughter). All right, our next presentation is, two presentations from our Councilmember from the 3rd District, Dennis Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, we're going to honor a student from the award-winning Taft High School. If you please come forward, Julia, with your dad, Eugene. This is a very interesting story. If you want to talk about LA Unified School District, this is a story that is incredible. Julia and her dad, Eugene, they migrated from Russia. Julia was 16 years old when she arrived in the United States in 1994, did not speak any English. She's the only California student and one of 11 students in this nation who took the ACT/SAT college entrance test in September and scored the highest possible composite score. Incredible.[1100.42][1100.42](Applause). You can come forward. Recently helped the Taft High School Academic Decathlon Team win the LAUSD competition, will compete in the state finals in March 2006 down in, where are you going to go for that?
Those are over.
Oh, you're going to the, no, you, the state, the state, you won the state. Now you're going to the national in San Antonio, Texas?
Yeah.
April, in San Antonio. Her schooling has been LA Unified since arriving from Russia. She was asked to address the LA Unified School District Board as an inspirational speaker in one of their meetings. She resides with her parents, Tanya and Eugene, and younger sister Anastasia in Encino. Her hobbies are reading and listening to music, and obviously studying. Los Angeles City Council is hereby congratulate and commend you, Julia Ribogan, for your excellent academic achievements and wish you best in your future endeavors. And I was mentioning earlier that we expect to see you and the other students from Taft back here after you win the national decathlon. And from the Los Angeles City Council, from the mayor, our consultant city attorney, a resolution commending you for that wonderful accomplishment. And just a couple of words from you, if you?
Sure.
Would be so kind?
I'd just like to thank everyone for having me here. I love being recognized for everything I do in my schoolwork and on the decathlon, so having just won this state competition really makes me feel great and kind of on a really happy streak right now, so this is just the icing on the cake. Thank you very much.[1195.28][1195.28](Applause).
Thank you. More to this, more to this.[1200.15][1200.15](Applause). I have one more presentation. We'll do photos in the back.
Before, before you leave, actually, Ms. Gruel, wanted to just add a quick word, Ms. Gruel.
I just wanted to congratulate you on your accomplishments. And if you're ever looking for a job in public service as someone from the Valley and with your wonderful expertise and internships, I, because what year are you in school?
I'm senior.
You're a senior, and you're going where to school?
I don't know yet.
You don't know yet, okay?
You're a Taft now.
Oh.
You're a Taft.
Yeah, I go to Taft, but I don't know where I'm going.
Going to college, right, where she's going to go to college. Well, if you stay in this region or come back for the summers, I know we would welcome someone of your caliber here in the City of Los Angeles. And as someone who started off as an intern in the city, I can attest to the fact that it is a great job, and you would add a lot. So we try to get all the smartest people here in City Hall, so congratulations.
Get a resolution to job offer at the same time. That's great.
Yeah.[1262.51][1262.51](Laughter) Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Hahn.[1264.51][1264.51](Applause).
And our next presentation, Ed, if you're family, please join us. Your family here?
Yes, they are.
Come on up, please join us. We're going to say goodbye to another dedicated city employee. We've seen his face around. Look, they're going to start crying up there at the podium. The, Ed Perez, city attorney, is retiring from the City of Los Angeles after 30 years and six months. Ed was born and raised in East Chicago, Indiana, and I didn't know you played basketball, but you did, because you went to San Diego State University on a basketball scholarship. Attended San Diego Law School, where he received his law degree. Began his initial employment with the office of city attorney in 1975, and the criminal division officially retired on February 17, 2006. Transferred to the civil division, general counsel section in 1978, providing legal service regarding public utilities such as telecommunications, energy, and other matters information technology agency. Practiced extensively before the California Public Utilities Commission, Federal Communications Commission, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. Was the city's legal advisor for cable television franchising and regulation from 1981 to 2003, commencing with the initial wiring of the city in 1981, also with the citywide refranchise in 1987. The highlight of his legal career, in addition to your wonderful family, was presenting oral arguments to the United States Supreme Court in 1986, Communications versus City of Los Angeles. He transferred to the Department of Water and Power in June 2003. Ed resides in Laverne with his wife Patricia and their children. You've got more than two here, so there's more family.
These are the children.
Okay, these are the children. Christina and David and other members of the family. Los Angeles City Council is hereby commend and congratulate you 30 years, six months, dedicated service to the people of Los Angeles, and the microphone is yours, Ed.
Thank you. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Truly honored to be here.
Ashley, before you speak, sir, if I may, there's two other council members who'd like to add their good wishes as well, Mr. Rosendahl and Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ed Perez, I probably know you more and better and longer than anybody in the city government today. In 1981, when I came to Los Angeles permanently in the cable business with Westinghouse Broadcasting and Cable that then became Century and then became Adelphia, I had to keep putting my head down every time a merger and acquisition happened, so I wouldn't lose it. Through most of that time, you were there, and you were a stellar representative of the people, representing the City of Los Angeles in those negotiation sessions. I remember in 1987, when the franchise went up for renewal, you were at the table, and you kept talking about customer service, you kept talking about rates, and you kept talking about what was in the best interest of the consumer, the public. I was on the other side of the table, representing the cable industry, and grew to respect you and appreciate your leadership. You're not leaving the government. I'm not going to let you go. You can leave on this particular moment, but you need to come back as a consultant to ITA as they go through the franchises of Time Warner Cable taking over our great city. There's lots of things we need to do with Time Warner Cable, including getting a channel like they have in New York, New York One, a real public affairs channel. We need to get them more focused on customer service and a lifeline, basic service for everybody in the city, for seniors and people who can't afford the high prices of cables. The only way the city is going to get it, if they're smart enough, to go back and ask a person who has the great history, experience, reputation, and track record for the people to come back as a consultant and assist the city as we go through this franchising renewal process. So that's my appeal to you. Take a deep breath, have a few days off, come back to the city at another forum. Congratulations on your award today.
Mr. Padilla?[1517.83][1517.83](Applause).
Thank you, Mr. President. I just rise really to congratulate you and to say thank you. I may not have known you as long as Bill Rosendahl has, but I can attest in front of everybody today that I wouldn't have the foundation of technology policy that I have if it wasn't for you. When I first joined the council, I was pretty much immediately made Chair of the ITGS Committee, and it was in the middle of the last round of, you know, the cable versus telecom wars on the issue of open access and the issue of regulation over the Internet, access to the Internet vis-à-vis different platforms, and your help was tremendous as I was coming up to speed on the issues, coming up to speed on the law and the proposed policy changes to the, to the point where, if I recall correctly, we sent you into federal court on behalf of the city in an amicus brief that we were filing that was sort of a breakthrough development in what was the cable service, what was the telecommunications service, and what we now reference as an information service because of data that's transmitted via the Internet because of broadband technology. We now find ourselves going into not just franchise negotiations that are long overdue for the city, but really local policy questions, state and federal proposed legislation that could impact the playing field, if you will, and has significant repercussions for the City of Los Angeles. So while we're sad to see you go and leave the city family, I'm happy about the prospect of hanging on to you on behalf of the city to continue to watch our back during the judicial as well as the legislative years ahead. So I know your family's here, they're very, very proud of you and all the contribution that you've made to the City of Los Angeles. I just wanted to rise as one council member to say thank you for the help and the education you provided me to help me make me a better public servant.
Mr. Reyes?
I do just want to rise and congratulate you. Mr. Perez, in Spanish, you call him Art Mateo Caio, right? The same first name. But I want to thank your family. I know what sacrifices families make when you're a civil servant and the hours you spend for the city, so I just want to thank your wife, your son, your daughter, all your family here for letting us benefit from his work, his presence, his leadership, and he must be very proud, and I thank you for your sacrifices and your time. So may you enjoy your golden years.
Thank you very much. But I hope I'm around, as three of the speakers have mentioned.[1688.92][1688.92](Laughter). You know, I'm deeply honored, and I truly wanted to go out quietly.[1694.48][1694.48](Laughter). Didn't really let my colleagues know what was going on. I didn't have a retirement party, and I made a mistake. I came in here on February 17 to thank some of the council people that I'd worked closely with, and say goodbye to them. with, say goodbye to them, and there was a few left here, and Councilman Zine zapped me, and he said, "There's no way you're going to get away without a resolution and this day here before you." And I'm very pleased, and thank you so much. It means a lot to me, truly does. You know, it's been a privilege to work for the city of Los Angeles for my 30-plus years, and I truly mean that, and I'm going to miss it. And the highlight, of course, was my Supreme Court argument, cable TV franchising case, landmark case. It was truly an honor to be there speaking on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, which is the greatest city in this country. I do have some regrets, and one regret is that, you know, the lion's share of my legal career was telecommunications, broadband for municipalities, a municipality, the city of Los Angeles. I'm going to miss that. I'm going to miss being there, but hopefully there'll be a way to get around that, and I'll come in in a different position. But I will definitely miss that. Since 1981, when the city first started wiring for cable, I was here, and so it's actually part of me, it's grown into me, and I don't want to leave it. A little side note on the Supreme Court case that I had, I think Councilwoman Grule will probably appreciate this more than most, and that is, the opposition decided to subpoena Mayor Tom Bradley. So I spent about a week or two with Tom Bonaventura planning, how do we brief Mayor Bradley for this deposition, you know? We can't make mess up, it's very, very important, and Mr. Bradley is, you know, is very important. We've got to make him look good. So we worked on it for about a week, thinking about what we're going to do, how we're going to do it, and then we go in and we meet Mayor Bradley. It was my first face-to-face meeting with Mayor Bradley, and he's sitting there in his office, and I walk in and I say, "Mayor Bradley, Ed Perez here to prepare you for your deposition, sir." He says, "Have a seat," you know, he's a very gracious man. He sits down, and I say, "Well, Mayor Bradley," and Tom Bonaventura, of course, he's sitting behind me, he didn't want to take any heat, so he's back here, and I said, "Mayor Bradley, I want to, here's how we, I think we should proceed." And I started, and he said, "Just a minute, Mr. Perez," he says, "I'd like to make a couple suggestions." I said, "Well, certainly." So he makes a couple suggestions, couple suggestions, and before you know it, he prepared me for the deposition. I mean, he was so well-versed on how to handle himself. That was truly a very special moment for me. Now, municipal broadband is not going away like some people think. I mean, cable television is here to stay, but there's going to be a competitor of cable television. It's called broadband over power lines, and I had the pleasure of being the legal advisor for that on the initial demonstrations over at the Department of Water and Power. A regret is, I'm not going to be around to finish that up, but I tell you, that new technology will permit someone to have what they call a home plug, put it in your wall, move your computer there, anywhere there's a plug, you can get Internet, voice-over-Internet, all of the broadband services. That is a fantastic, fantastic breakthrough. Now, what could it do for the city of Los Angeles? It's going to be able to cut the cost of government significantly. It provides a potential extra revenue stream, and we all know there's a budgetary problem coming up. This is one way to do it. And the other thing that is going to surprise people, with broadband over power lines, you're going to be able to actually reduce carbon emissions and improve the environment. And I'll let the people at Water and Power explain how they do that, but I'm telling you, it's fantastic. I wish I could stay and hang on to that one, but I've got to go and do better and bigger things. Now, I will be joining a law firm April 1 called Hawkins, Prada, and Daly, and they're a downtown firm here, but they graciously are going to permit me to work out of my home, so I don't have to come downtown once in a while. But I'm going to be doing their standard practice, which is insurance defense, PI, and employment law, and then they're going to let me build my own practice, which will be government representation, telecommunications, and those kinds of things. So hopefully you will see me around, and I really, really will miss the city of Los Angeles. Thank you, Councilman Zine, very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate those efforts very much, and good luck to you. We hope to see you soon. Our next presentation is going to be from Council District 10, Mr. Herb Wesson. While we're awaiting Mr. Wesson and Mr. Labons, do you want to make a couple introductions real quick?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Please welcome Lauren Hogan and Adam Hogan. They're family members from our Commissioner Strickler's of Public Works. Give them a big hand, welcome them to City Hall. David, we're going to come around here for a picture. Give them a big hand. Oh, good job. Come on over, yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Wesson.
Good morning, Mr. President and members. At this time, I'd like to ask Councilman Parks if he has a moment to join me and the Larry Grant contingent, if he would come forward. You know, Mr. Larry Grant is no stranger to this community. He is the CEO of the Kingdom Day Parade, and many of you know that this parade has been in Los Angeles for 20 years, since 1986. 21 years, but before that, it was started by Larry in San Diego, and we're just so fortunate that you decided to move a little north so that we could steal this great parade that is a cultural event that everyone in the LA County region enjoys. This parade has over 500,000 spectators. I can't even begin to guess how many participants, 200 or 300?
10,765.
So he's had 10,000, almost 11?
Every year.
It's had a lot of participants. He's got dancers, marching bands, elected officials, celebrities, and floats, and I'm proud to say that in the past seven years, that my float has won first prize twice. No, it was a different float. I changed it up. No, it was Mr. Parks, security for Chief Parks here. But anyway, Mr. Grant has just turned 80 years old. Let's give him a round of applause. But I say to you that he is a very, very young man because just last week, Mr. Parks and I honored an individual who was 100 years old and just retiring. So this young man of 80 years old, Larry Grant, has done a lot for our community. He served in the military, he was in England, France, and South Korea. He was a very successful president of a bank in San Diego. He then retired, but didn't really retire. He became a high-ranking deputy for Congresswoman, then Assemblywoman, Juanita McDonnell, and I think the most important thing about Larry is his love of his family. He and his wife have been married for 57 years. He has two sons, two daughters, nine grandkids, and nine great-grandkids. Let's give him a round of applause. I'm surprised you even have money. Anyway, we're joined today by a grandson, a great-grandson, the grandson's wife, and I want to ask, in fact, look at this young man, look. Let's give this young man a round of applause. You see that seat over there that says Wesson? In about 30 years, you'll be sitting in it. No, one day you'll be sitting right there. At this point, I'm going to ask Mr. Parks to come up and say a few words.
Thank you very much, Herb. I was so pleased to see Herb win that contest for the last couple of years, but we should know that there was only one float in the parade, is why he won it three years in a row. But I wanted to say to Mr. Grant, thank you so much for what you've done, but not only what you do daily, but one of the things he also has done with the Martin Luther King Parade, he turned it into an economic development issue for the Limerd Park community. He spends all year developing the parade, and for years, it would go down King Boulevard and stop at Western, and the benefit of those 8,000 to 10,000 people in the parade would just get in their cars and drive away. Reversing it and turning it into a, into Limerd Park where a festival is going on has been, done wonders for the community economically, and so he has generated not only a parade, but now a annual event to where people come to Limerd Park looking to have a great festival in addition to that. And I just want to say thank you, and also echo what Herb said, is that you never see him without his family. He is grooming, and I was just talking to the great-grandson, I said, "I hope when you run the parade that you're not as difficult as your grandfather is."
And what did he say?
He said he's going to be even more difficult.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Hahn, I'd like to add your thoughts as well.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to rise and congratulate Larry Grant, wish him happy birthday. You are, not only your legacy with the King Day Parade, you are a great American, and you've really spoken for veterans of the wars. You really truly are a legacy in Los Angeles, but many people might know that Larry Grant will have another legacy in terms of our rules here on the city council. And sometimes it takes, you know, something to happen for us to do the right thing. We try to do the right thing, and I thought about it for years, but it took this incident to happen to make us realize that when the public comes down here, they shouldn't have to wait four hours while we go through all of our agenda before they're allowed to speak during public comment. And Larry Grant came down here to speak, I don't even remember what the issue was, but it was four hours, and you, your health requires you to eat something every so often, and you did not want to leave the council chambers and even go outside to get a snack because you were afraid you'd lose your place. Well, the next thing you know, we were calling the paramedics because Larry wasn't doing so well. And at that moment, I thought, "We are going to change the rules on the city council and now put public comment in the beginning of our council meetings so that people don't have to go through that." So that'll be another one of your legacies, Larry Grant. Congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Ms. Grule?
I just wanted to add my congratulations. The event, the parade, is an extraordinary time and one that involves everyone in the city of Los Angeles, and you have been, you know, welcomed with open arms to all of us, and the three girls, the three gals, Jan and Janice and I so enjoy going together and being in that parade, and one that is run, you know, it goes on time, it moves no matter what, and I think that your, as Ms. Hahn mentioned, your legacy and your commitment to that community and all that you do, and particularly that you've made sure that your sons and grandsons and great-grandsons and granddaughters have the same kind of interest. And so we appreciate what you've done, not only in creating the parade, but creating an atmosphere in which we are celebrating Martin Luther King. So thank you, Larry, for all that you have done for this city and for this community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please, Mr. Wesson.
You know, I'm glad that Ms. Grule indicated that Mr. Grant, my dear friend of many years, starts the parade on time. This time, the mayor, who was the grand marshal, he had to hustle to catch up. I think that his car or whatever went a block without him in there, so he does start this parade on time. And with that said, I'd like to present to you a resolution from the city of Los Angeles, Larry, and trust me, I'm not going to bore you by reading this, but I do want you to know that it's signed by our council president, Eric Garcetti, myself, and Councilmember Parks. Thank you for everything that you do. I'm going to give you this and let you say a few things.
Thank you. First of all, to the illustrious president sitting there, say hello to your father for me, and to the former president, Mr. Padilla. How are you today, sir? I didn't see you in the parade this year.
He came to the beginning, he didn't ride.
Oh, okay. For the three lovely ladies who always are there, I want you up here in this photograph. I want the three musketeers, the three female council members to come up here and be a part of this. Come on up, ladies, for all three of you.
Ms. Perry is en route.
She's not here today, then?
She's en route and should be here in a few minutes. So out back, I think you should be able to get a picture.
Because, let me tell you something. 22 years ago, I went to see this young lady's father, and he met me on the streets of Los Angeles, going down Martin Luther King Boulevard for the first parade, and he said to me, "Larry, you're the guy that started this parade?" And I said, "Yes." He says, "Thank you." And I said this at a funeral about two months ago, right? That supervisor, Kenneth Hahn, came over, hugged me, kissed me on both teeth, and kissed my hand and said, "Thank you." I don't know why, nobody's ever done this before. And I love her father. I loved her father, and I think he was a great man, and she's just as great, his daughter is just as great, believe me. She's a chip off the old block. I want to thank each and every one of you for honoring me today. It's been 21 years here in Los Angeles, 26 years in the state of California, but I would not have been able to do it without the help of my grandson, who's going to, who is my executive assistant, and he's standing behind me, his name is Deshaun Williams, and he's been helping me since he was 12 years old. So for 21 years, he's been helping me. Also, my granddaughter, his wife, today's her birthday. Today is her birthday, March 21st. I won't tell you how old she is. You know how you ladies are. And finally, my supervisor, Jan, come on up here, darling.
Ms. Perry.
Come on up here, darling. I have the permission to call, Mr. President, do I have the permission to call her darling?
Yes.
Okay.
Only you.
No, you don't. Also, finally, I'd like to introduce one of my supervisors, Nico Anthony Williams. He's my great-grandson, he's eight years old, going on 80. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, and congratulations again. Our next presentations will be led by Ms. Perry, but while we're preparing for that, I'd like to recognize Mr. Reyes for a very special introduction.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to acknowledge some very important folks who are here to celebrate a ceremony, a tribute to the legacy of Archbishop Oscar E. Romero, his 26th anniversary of his martyrdom. Today, we have organizations such as Salif, Clinica Monsignor Oscar Romero, Comunidades Caresen, Central American Research and Policy Institute of Cal State University, Northridge, Father Stephen Nakinston from La Placita Alvera, and Reverend Fernando Santiana. At 12 o'clock, we'll be in the rotunda. You're welcome to join us and pay our respects and honor Archbishop Oscar E. Romero, legacy to his martyrdom. Thank you.
And I know Mr. Reyes will lead us, and when we convene council today, we will have a moment of silence in memory of Monsignor Oscar Romero in the council. I know when I was down in El Salvador, and I think Mr. Reyes might have seen this too, there's actually an original adjournment motion for Mr. Romero from this body, and we will certainly be recommemorating that.
Could I just ask them to stand, please, those that are here to honor Archbishop? Thank you so much for joining us this morning, and your patience.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Perry with our two last presentations.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's Delta time. Would all the Deltas please join me here at the podium, and I think Mr. Parks is going to join us also. It's an honor to be joined here today by the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Century City Alumni Chapter, and I want to just recognize a few people before I get into my comments. Commissioner, Regional Commissioner Pat Reed Cunningham is here, President Mary Stallings, the 25th Anniversary Chair, Neelora Bell, and the Delta Day Chair, of course, our own Jackie Dupont Walker, and I think Mr. Wesson, if he's in the chamber, okay, he's in the back, Ms. Dupont Walker is a constituent in the 10th District. Delta Sigma Theta was founded on January 13, 1913, by 22 collegiate women at Howard University. The first public act performed by the Delta founders involved their participation in the Women's Suffrage March in Washington, DC, March 1913. Today, there are 950 chapters in Delta's international network, and Mr. Wesson, if you could join us, your constituent is here. The Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated is an organization of college-educated women committed to constructive development of its members and to public service with a primary focus on the African-American community. The Five Point Program, Thrust, provides an array of public service initiatives in the following areas: economic development, educational development, international awareness and involvement, physical and mental health, political awareness and involvement. The Century City Alumni Chapter was chartered March 22, 1981, by 18 dynamic women and was established as the 679th Chapter in Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, and the current membership is 112 women. Their mission is to empower women, youth, and families through programs which enhance educational and economic development. The programs and projects of the Educational Development Program include Dr. Betty Chabaz's Delta Academy, a mentoring project for girls ranging from the age of 11 to 14 years old, which includes a full range of activities designed to develop math, science, and technology literacy, and it is also focused on building self-esteem and positive self-concept in its participants. A new initiative, the Delta Academy II/Delta Gems, which stands for Growing and Empowering Myself Successfully, is a mentoring project for girls 14 to 18, and one of the original projects, which has continued for 25 years, McAllister High School for Pregnant Minors provides personal development services, including career and family planning, health, grooming, tutoring, and parenting skill for pregnant minors. This is just a few of their many... This is just a few of their many worthwhile projects. Current programs include Mary Murphy Graduate Scholarship, named after a beloved charter member, which provides financial support to women pursuing graduate degrees, and over $90,000 have been given, $90,000 has been given out in scholarships. Live Theater for Children, which provides cultural experiences for music, dance, and drama for disadvantaged youth. The chapter's dedication to economic development includes the Excel Family Intervention Programs. Foster Care and Adoption Agencies have a relationship with Delta that provides life skills workshops which focus on independent living. The Century City Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta cares about political awareness and involvement, too. In 2004, they attended training and volunteered with the League of Women Voters Voter Information and Education Hotline. So today, I am proud to stand with my colleagues in recognizing the Century City Alumni Chapter of the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority and to commend its dedication to enhancing educational and economic development for all those who benefit from their being here in the city of Los Angeles. And this is truly Delta Day here in the city of Los Angeles. And before we do our presentation, I'd like to ask Mr. Parks and Mr. Wesson to please say a few words.
And after them, we have a couple of the council members who'd like to add their good wishes as well. Mr. Parks.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perry. I would just like to say thank you for your 25 years of work. You couldn't have picked more appropriate issues as family, youth, and women in our community, as you see so many things that are going right and wrong in our community deals and surrounds our families. And so, it's important that we highlight that. Also, want to just give a special note to Jackie Dupont Walker, who runs one of the best senior programs, I think, in the city, but just happens to be located in the 8th District, does a wonderful job at Thanksgiving and developing relationships in the community and outreach during Thanksgiving. And also, want to acknowledge that one of my sheros in this city has been Marion Matthews, the first black female in the state of California that was a librarian. Now, we have the honor of having her name on one of our libraries on Venice and Florence. And so, we wanted to have a permanent tribute to her, which also is apparent that this Delta organization is also ensuring that they have a scholarship in her name. So, welcome and congratulations on your 25th year.
First of all, I want to thank Ms. Perry for allowing me to participate. This is a great day. I want to say to Mr. Parks that, yes, Jackie Dupont Walker does run a very wonderful program in your area, but don't think it's just exclusive to that area. We're gonna grow. We're gonna, we're gonna grow, and we're gonna put these programs in other parts of the city because they're truly needed, and I'm working with Ms. Dupont Walker right now to try to put something right at Crenshaw and the 10 freeway. With that said, when I was first elected, or when I was elected Speaker of the House, one of the first awards that I ever received was from the soras of DST, the Delta Sigma Theta. So, if you ever want to come by my office, you'll see this beautiful eagle that you asked me about every time. Four of the ladies visited with me today. Did I not show you the eagle first? Is it not in a prominent place in my office? Anyway, you do phenomenal work. I'm excited about working with you in the future. Very rarely do you have organizations that come to you and say, how can we help you? What can we do for you? And I mean, they're very skilled, and they can do a variety of things, so I really appreciate the offer, and I'm gonna take you up on that. With that said, if this is Delta Day, then this is a great day. God bless America.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Rosendahl, to be followed by Ms. Hahn.
I just want to acknowledge not only this moment, and the red, which is red of passion and commitment, was this morning, before the council meeting even started, three of these great ladies were waiting to see me in my office to lobby me on issues that impact people in my district. So, they're not a talk group, they're an action group, and I want to congratulate you all for your leadership in helping solve the great community problems we have today. Congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn, to be followed by Ms. Gruehl.
Well, I'm just glad to rise and say we're really glad that we're honoring Delta Sigma Theta, and I only got to spend about 20 minutes in my office this morning with educated, inspiring, articulate, passionate, knowledgeable women who I left feeling like, you know, I have some partners that are gonna tackle issues in my district like gang violence and getting young people involved in everything from our neighborhood councils to after-school programs to mentoring programs. I feel excited and I feel empowered that we have a very, very loud voice of women who are gonna make a difference, who have made a difference, who have made a difference in our community, and I look forward to using you to help solve some tough issues in my own district. I loved it that you also brought up the pollution in the harbor area. You know, that gave me great joy to know that that's an issue that affects everyone, and you are, you have paid attention to that issue, and you want to help me solve that issue. So, congratulations and thank you for being such dedicated, passionate women. We also talked about how we can get more women elected to government, because then we'll really make a difference.
Ms. Gruehl.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to the Delta Sigma Theta group of women who are here today. I, too, had an opportunity to meet with a few of them and see some familiar faces of people I had worked with on the issues of housing and homelessness and education. And as said, I think by Mr. Rosendahl and Ms. Hahn, that the conversations we had were not just about what are you doing to solve the problems, but what can we do to help you? And where are the important issues from, how do we solve the problem of the dropout rate in our school district? And how do we address the issue of the fact that we have a number of African-American women who are homeless, and how do we address that issue? And how do we create affordable housing in the city of Los Angeles? And so, I'm just pleased that there's not only 15 of us here working to solve problems in the city of Los Angeles, but we have our own secret and not-so-secret army of women who are gonna help us. And as Janice and Jan and I always say, we know the women can usually get down, roll up their sleeves, and get something done. So, we appreciate that, and that all of you are gonna help. Nothing disrespectful to our male counterparts.
Yes, dear.
I just want to thank all of you for taking the time and your commitment to the city and this region. So, thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Gruehl. And she's wearing red in honor of all the Deltas today, and all the men, when we hear how great the women are on the council, we just say, yes, dear. So, please. Go ahead, Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'd like to just give the opportunity to National Commissioner Pat Reed Cunningham and President Mary Stallings just to say a few words.
Thank you, Councilwoman Perry. I am honored and pleased to accept this honor on behalf of the Century City Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority. We are 112 members strong, but we are part of a larger membership of over 200,000 women in Delta Sigma Theta Sorority. And that includes international chapters. We have over 900 chapters internationally. And as we focus on our 25th Silver Anniversary, we thought it only fitting that we come to City Hall to let you know that we want to partner with you to improve the quality of life for all of the residents of the city of Los Angeles. We also are concerned about the issues that you have and that you are working on, and we are willing to work and support on behalf of those who do not have a voice and for those who are marginalized. We cannot forget those. We all want peace and prosperity and working together. Not only will we have peace and prosperity, but we will have justice and concern for all in the city of Los Angeles. Again, I thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, and thank you, council members, President, for receiving us. It's 93 years for Delta Sigma Theta, and this month of March is very important to us. It allows us to renew all of our values as it relates to public service. Today is the first of what we hope to be many Delta Days in City Hall in the great city of Los Angeles. Let me just say to you, this journey for us began February the 11th. We have had Delta Days, our 17th in the nation's capital. We had our fourth experience at the UN as we are at NGO Group. We held our 21st Delta Days in Sacramento. So, it's only fitting that we began here in Los Angeles. Let me also let you know that Century City, the chapter who you are honoring today, is a model of social action. They have opened doors for many, they have stood up for a few, and they're always present. So, again, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Congratulations again, and thank you. Ms. Perry, I know, has one more presentation, so I'd like to continue to recognize her, and we appreciate the folks who've been waiting for public comment. We will move to that as our next order of business as soon as this presentation is over, including Ms. Brewer, if you're still out there in Van Nuys, we know you're there waiting patiently. So, thank you. And with that, Ms. Perry.
The next presentation, Mr. President, is on behalf of the Los Angeles Chamber Orchestra, and I'd like to ask Mr. Andrea Galuni, Associate Executive Director of the Chamber, to join me. You can introduce everyone in a second. I'm honored to receive our very own Los Angeles Chamber Orchestra. I've asked the orchestra to come in for a very special presentation today for their outstanding efforts to connect area seniors and students to free chamber performances and programs. They are a community and neighbor here in downtown. The mission of the Los Angeles Chamber Orchestra is to preserve and advance a living tradition of orchestral music through artistically excellent performances that energize and enrich the lives of the players and listeners alike. They celebrate the personal connection among their musicians, audiences, and community as shaped by the intimacy of their unique chamber orchestra experience in our world-renowned Walt Disney Concert Hall. This is an important tradition, and it is a tradition that is important to share with the next generation and with those who have never had the opportunity to experience live performances like those presented by this orchestra. Students from local-area high schools like Jefferson, Santee, Fremont, and others have been personally touched by the magical performances of the orchestra. So today, I wanted to thank them for their continued strong partnership in our community and to present a certificate to them and express my appreciation publicly and on behalf of the city of Los Angeles for the service that they will continue to provide to the city of Los Angeles and its people. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Before I actually make my remarks, I did, we've been here, I think, for about an hour and a half watching all the other presentations, and I think other people talk about how great the city of Los Angeles is, but, you know, I think we're part of the arts, and it's really been terrific to watch, you know, the students in the high schools and the cultural diversity in the city of Los Angeles. So, it's really, particularly for me, a big honor to be here and accept this award for the Chamber Orchestra. Just a few remarks. I'd just like to thank Councilwoman Perry, President Garcetti, and we're honored to accept this certificate on behalf of the entire Los Angeles Chamber Orchestra family, my fellow board members, Andrea Laguni and the staff who are here, our executive director, Ruth Eliot, and also our music director, Jeff Cahane, who's a Los Angeles native, and the world-class musicians that make up the Los Angeles Chamber Orchestra. I think everyone here can take pride in the fact that Los Angeles is now a global destination for the arts, especially music, and we're proud to be part of that. As a Los Angeles institution, the Chamber Orchestra, we believe, is unique. You might say organic because it's a product of the city and the fact that we have, it's a classical orchestra that was created to take advantage of the wealth of talented musicians that play literally behind the scenes in the Hollywood studios. We feel very privileged to be part of an institution that brings people together to share an experience that touches our souls, one where there's a very real and heartfelt bond among the listeners and the audience and the players on the stage. I'd like to thank the city of council for supporting and continuing to support the Department of Cultural Affairs, which makes grants to the Chamber Orchestra, and it's because of those grants that we're able to serve the community through our neighborhood concerts and the Meet the Music education program that Councilwoman Perry talked about. Thank you again, Councilwoman Perry, and all of the members of the council. This recognition from the city means a terrific, a great amount to us. So, thank you again very much.
Thank you.
Just want to add my thanks to Ms. Perry and Mr. President, and invite everybody, renew the invitation to everybody to come and experience the Los Angeles Chamber Orchestra on April 8th, conducted by our music director, Jeffrey Cahane. Thank you.
Thank you. That's very nice. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you all very much, and thank you again for, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Gruehl.
I just wanted to add to the representatives from the Chamber Orchestra that I saw just two days ago at home, my husband and I were looking at the wonderful programs that you are offering and trying to pick which one we wanted to go to and appreciate. And so, I think it's not only thanking you today, but publicizing and the support that Ms. Perry gives you, but publicizing to people that our Chamber Orchestra is one of the best and that we should let everyone know about it. From those of us that represent the Valley, that they can take the subway, the orange line, get off right near Disney Hall, be able to go into the Music Center and Disney Hall there very easily and safely. And so, we encourage everyone to come to the Chamber Orchestra and be able to support it, and I look forward to seeing you at one of the programs there at the orchestra. Thanks very much, Shannon. Thank you all to you.
Thank you very much. It's now time for public comment, and I'd like to go to Van Nuys first, if we may. If Ms. Sharon Brewer is out there still, now is the time to give public comment on items that are not on our agenda but are part of our jurisdiction. And we'll have two minutes per speaker. Ms. Brewer, thank you for your patience, and go ahead.
Hi, my name is Sharon Brewer, and I'm back again to talk about the event that's on April 2nd, 2006, at Lake Balboa, one week from the Sunday. The Persian New Year celebration will promote a greater cultural awareness of the Persian community in the greater Los Angeles area. This is taken from the motion. I wanted to give you an update, as the two signs that I showed to council on Tuesday are still the only signs at the lake as of 9:30 AM today, giving the date and the place only. I found out at 3:00 PM via email yesterday that the permit was signed yesterday, but in that email, I was informed by Valley Region that I could not get a copy of the permit until Tuesday, March 28th, next week, because the person was off today and Monday is a holiday. Valley Region is open today, their hours are 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. So, I have to wait until next week, less than a week before the event, to get a copy of this event, which has important information about what is planned for the event. Closure of the south portion of Lake Balboa, the paid admission, could include the children's play area heavily used by the public on weekends. Bike path goes through Lake Balboa that, I've been told, will be closed, and the road that goes through Lake Balboa, possible closure. Once again, the solution to prevent any closure of Lake Balboa City Park to the public for this event is the large, open, flat, and hardly-used area north of the waterfall at Lake Balboa, easily fenced so admission can be charged and yet close enough to the rest of the park for the enjoyment of the participants going to the event. I have not been contacted by anyone from CD6 regarding my concerns. I also have a concern about council file 032193 with regards to no parking allowed on the east side of Balboa from the LA River to Victory and the no-left turn signs at the entrance to Lake Balboa going south on Balboa. And DOT to provide traffic personnel if necessary. DOT needs to be there, just from past experience from the other two years.
That's two minutes, if I can ask you to conclude.
Okay. To help cut down on the traffic backup that will occur on Balboa Boulevard from cars coming to this event and people just using the park in general, I believe that these cars should be directed to enter off of Woodley Avenue for parking in the large lot that's there.
Thank you very much.
That would help alleviate a lot of the parking problems. And I also want to invite everybody, the cherry trees are in bloom, and I want to encourage the public to come enjoy the beauty of the trees.
Thank you, Ms. Brewer.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Our next speaker is Josefina Medina, here at Resili Tlatoa and Alberto Tlatoa.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Josefina Medina. Buenos dias a honoreables. Buenos dias, honorable concejales. En las últimas semanas hemos escuchado testimonios de personas que dicen que nuestra comunidad necesita más canchas de fútbol. Nosotros estamos de acuerdo que sí las necesitamos y debemos trabajar duro para asegurar que se realicen.
Good morning, my name is Josefina Medina. Good morning, honorable council people. During the last few weeks, we've been hearing a lot of testimony of people that say that we need more football fields in our community. We are in agreement of that, and we must work hard so that we can make sure that these soccer fields come to being. Our children need these safe and healthy areas for recreational activities.
Nuestros niños necesitan áreas seguras y sanas para recreación, pero no debemos poner esta necesidad social en contra de la necesidad de salvar el jardín de 41 y Alameda, porque antes de que los niños puedan participar en deportes deben estar bien alimentados. En el Distrito 9 no faltan McDonald's, Burger King, con comida chatarra, y también por donde quiera podemos encontrar licorerías y tienditas pequeñas que venden cantidades de fritos y sodas a nuestros niños.
We should put these social needs against the needs of saving the Garden on 41st and Alameda, because before all that, our children need to participate in, because before the need of our children participating in sports, they must be well nourished. And there's, in District 9, we have plenty of McDonald's and Burger Kings with fast food. You can look around also and see a lot of liquor stores and small stores that sell a lot of junk food such as French potato chips, sodas, and things of that sort.
A la misma vez, no se encuentran mercados como Bristol Farm or Trader Joe's. Estos negocios no surtan a las comunidades pobres. De lo contrario, el terreno de 41 y Alameda surte comida buena y fresca a miles de personas. La mayoría son de bajos recursos, pero si llega personas ricas no hacemos discriminación.
At the same time, stores like Bristol Farms and Trader Joe's do not exist in these areas. Those businesses do not supply services to our, to poor communities. To the contrary, the land on 41st and Alameda supplies good nutritional, fresh food to thousands and thousands of people, most of whom are of low-income status. But of course, if rich people visit us, we will not discriminate against them.
Quiero hacerles entender que no es verdad que la necesidad más urgente de la comunidad en este momento son acres de terrenos recreativos, aunque sí los necesita, pero no, pero más necesitamos terrenos dedicados a la cosecha de comida saludable y mantener la unidad de las familias. Aún, y necesitamos un representante que tome en cuenta las verdaderas necesidades de nuestra comunidad, lucharía por salvar la parcela de 41 y Alameda, y también por más campos recreativos.
I also want to let you know that it is not true that we need urgently more recreational activities in this moment, acres of land for this purpose, even though we do need them, but right now, what's more, mostly, most needed are, is land, land in order to farm food that's healthy and to be able to continue through this activity uniting our families. We need a representative that takes all this into mind and really considers the true needs of our community and that is able to fight to save this parcel that's located on 41st and Alameda, and also to help us with recreational areas.
Porque nosotros somos pobres, nuestros representantes no deben pensar que nos conformaremos con migajas. Nosotros soñamos en una comunidad limpia, sana y segura, y ellos deben soñar así también. Gracias. Espero estas palabras suenen en sus seguidos.
Just because we're poor, we don't want our representatives to think that we will be comfortable and we would just take morsels that people give us. We also dream of having a clean community that's healthy and a place where we can feel safe, and they should also dream that with us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Su nombre, por favor?
Buenos dias, mi nombre es Jose, y vengo representando a los campesinos del sur centro. Estimado consejo, durante el último mes hemos visto un aumento de ataques en la prensa local contra nuestros dirigentes. Esta es una táctica clara que busca dividir y conquistar. Esta táctica descarada busca pintar a nuestros dirigentes de déspotas y usurpadores del poder. La verdad es que nosotros, los campesinos, los elegimos precisamente para atraer transparencia a la administración del jardín.
Good morning, my name is Jose, and I'm here representing the farmers that are located on 41st and Alameda. Dear council people, during the last few months, we've seen an increase in attacks in the local media against our organizers. That's a clear tactic which they're using to divide and to conquer. These tactics are designed to put us, put our organizers in the light of being described as selfish, and people are taking advantage of their power. The truth is that we, the farmers, chose those precise organizers because of transparency of the administration of the garden.
Esta misma semana se presentó en este salón tan distinguido, y ante ustedes, nuestros representantes, uno de los elementos de la vieja guardia que desplazamos hace tres años, por razones de falta de transparencia. De una manera muy descarada mostró un artículo lleno de falsedades y acusó a uno de nuestros dirigentes de solo involucrarse en esta búsqueda de la justicia por el lucro personal.
Just this week, in these distinguished chambers, and before you guys, some of the previous representatives that we asked to leave our garden three years ago showed up here, and we asked them to leave because of lack of transparency. In a very inappropriate and blunt way, they show you an article that's full of deceitful information accusing one of our organizers that is only involving him or herself in this process in the search of justice and economical benefit.
Qué absurdo, el refán popular dice, el refán popular explica esta farsa. El comal le dijo la olla, este señor se presentó aquí y levantó estos cargos, luego trajo el volante invitándolos a la apertura del jardín del Distrito 15. Él se roseó a sacrificar de su tiempo para salvar el jardín de la 41 y Alameda cuando fue removido del cargo. Su respuesta a ser destituido recuerda al niño que mejor se lleva el balón a casa porque ningún equipo lo escogió a jugar en el partido.
This was absurd and ridiculous. If you can remember the popular expression that explains the pot calling the kettle black, this man presented here in front of you, charges that were brought in through a flyer that was inviting you to the opening of the garden that's located on District 15. He refused to sacrifice and give up his time in order to save the garden that's located on 41st and Alameda when he was removed from his position. His answer, when he was asked to leave his position at the garden, reminds us of that child who decided instead to take the soccer ball to his house because no team chose him to be part of the soccer team.
En un tiempo cuando él tomó parte de la vieja guardia directiva del jardín, este señor y su familia manejaba varias parcelas, algo prohibido por los reglamentos.
At that time, when he was asked to leave as a member of the Board of the Garden, this man was working or managing with his family various parcels, which is also prohibited as part of the rules of the Board of the Garden.
Pero cuando fue destituido, mejor se fue a donde ya estaba la mesa servida, y él no tenía que sacrificar nada. Señora Pérez, basta con este desfile de elementos que mejor aceptaron 30 monedas de plata que luchar por la justicia. Esto solo sirve para rebajar aún más a nuestra comunidad. En la parte este del Distrito 9 nos hacen falta más, más espacios verdes, no más contaminación. Le voy a repetir algo que le dije hace un tiempo. Yo voté por usted anteriormente, pero nunca jamás lo haré. Gracias.
When this man was asked to leave his position, he decided to go where the table was already served, that he didn't have to sacrifice anything. Ms. Perry, enough with this parade of elements. Parade of elements that are false and that you choose to accept money, like 30 pieces of gold, instead of fighting for what's fair. This only serves to bring down even more our community in an area of District 9 where more green space is needed. We don't need any more damage to our environment. I have said it before, and I will repeat it again. I voted for you once, but I am going to make sure that this will never happen again. In other words, I'm not going to vote for you anymore.
Thank you. Okay. Aracely Tlatoa?
Good morning, City Council. My name is Aracely Tlatoa, and I am a daughter of a South Central farmer. I am one of the faces of 350 family members of the South Central community who worked the land as our ancestors once did. Today, I had heard most of the members of the City Council in the support of a multicultural Los Angeles, but felt to see a guarantee that the 14-acre largest urban farm will not be harmed. I demand you on the behalf of the youth of the South Central farmer to save our source of fresh food. Thank you.
Good evening, City Council members. My name is Alberto Tlatoa, a South Central farmer and a current East Los Angeles Community College student. Last Wednesday, an individual came and said these things, as you heard right now, and let me, let me for the record say that 20 lots is not enough for, they're allocated 112 in Avalon, is not enough for my community, and plus, they are underneath power lines. You know what that causes? Leukemia and cancer. You want our kids to have cancer and leukemia? Is that why you offer us those pieces of land? Somebody, somebody needs to say something about that. And to Jonathan, I thank you that you offered four acres in your district. I mean, you're, the purpose of us coming here is not for that. We don't want relocation. We want to, we want to preserve that community that exists right here in South Central, and plus, the necessity exists right there, and already, a lot of the elderly people who have lots in the South Central farm take the metro as a method of transportation, and having them to go further, it's not, but it's okay. We could help you out, start, you know, your community garden so they could benefit your, your district, you know. To have more community gardens, that's the best thing and the best solution to most of the problems. So, and also, that we've been, we've been, we have shown to you guys our determination by being here for about three years, three long years of our work, that we have shown our presence here to show you how much this environment is important to our community. And we are here once again to tell you, to ask you to start fundraising to save the farm or to nullify the sale, because South Central farmers are doing something positive for the community, and it's beneficial for everyone, not just the 350 families that farm this farmland. We have culture, we have safety, we have food security. What else could the citizens of Los Angeles want but this type of environment to be emulated throughout Los Angeles? And this, this should be the foundation for the whole world, because this is the future of the nation, people having to grow their own food. Y aquí estamos, y no nos vamos.
Thank you. We have other speakers, Luke Vanderdrift, if you'd like to speak, Linda Piera Avila, Fernando Flores Sanchez. Any of those folks like to be heard today? Please come forward. If you could state your name for the record, thank you.
Linda Piera Avila, good morning, honorable council. We Greens stand in solidarity with the South Central farmers who have taken personal responsibility for nurturing this 14-acre urban jewel of life. We support the farmers' resistance to eviction, to relocation, and to environmental racism. In the shadow of downtown skyscrapers in an economically disadvantaged area, their farm stands as a testament to the power of multiracial community building, local food production, the environmental value of green open space, and social justice in the face of corporate greed. Their skills should be lauded by the city of Los Angeles as a valuable resource to be emulated, far more worthwhile to the future than any warehouse ever could be. It is morally wrong to evict people growing food, that are, morally wrong to evict people who are growing food to feed their families. I mean, this is a matter of survival for them. You have the opportunity to turn this thing around and to show leadership and to do the right thing for the people and for the land and for the city of Los Angeles. Please don't evict the South Central farmers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, council.
Your name, sir?
My name is Fernando Flores.
Thank you.
Sanchez. My history, my background is in design. I studied architecture, I studied the history of L.A., the planning, you know, does politics as well, and, you know, I've been an avid supporter of the farmers now for over a year and a half, two years, and I wrote a little statement for today. You can't fight City Hall, goes a popular saying, but we've been doing it for three years now. We keep coming back, week after week, because this illustrious body made a bad decision, and it must rectify it now. Though some of you involved in this bad decision must be tired of seeing our faces, our visits are evidence of our interest in how our city is governed. Civic-minded people should applaud that. Given the diminishing interest in politics among so many of our residents, we are running counter to the trend that sees so many elections barely attract a single-digit participation. There were two major things wrong with the decision to sell the city ownerback to Ralph Horowitz so he could pave the way for the South Central farm and to further pollute the area. The first was the bargain basement price the city sold it for. Though the land had been transferred from the Bureau of Sanitation to the Harvard Tower for $13 million a few years before, this indispensable deal was sold to Horowitz three years ago for $5.2 million. LA Unified School children don't seem to be the only ones having difficulty with math. If the market value of that land was higher than that of the amount for which it was sold to, Horowitz isn't, in that essence, picking the pockets of the residents of the city of Los Angeles. So isn't that giving Horowitz an $8 million subsidy? Another problem, and one that speaks to fighting City Hall, is the question of transparency. Though state law permits municipal councils the right to meet in closed session, decisions made under these conditions are telling the citizen's street to trust us.
If I can ask you to conclude?
But history is full of benevolent decisions made for the special interests, supposedly for the benefit of the many bicity governments.
Thank you, sir.
Here in L.A., we have a few samples. I'm almost done, please.
If I, we're a little over time, if I could just ask you to, one last sentence?
My last sentence. Here in L.A., we have seen few examples of removal of people from Bunker Hill, Charles Ravine, and Boyle Heights. Bunker Hill stood idle for a decade before a single building was erected, another decade before a second one was built.
Thank you, sir.
The city's tax base eventually grew, but at what expense?
I'm sorry, we have to go to our next speaker, my apologies. Is Luke Vanderdrift here? Would you like to speak, sir? And our next, Luke Vanderdrift, and then we have Susie Martinez and Felicia Ford will be our next speaker after that.
Thank you very much. I think it's great that there's a forum here where the public can come and voice their concerns on various issues. I live in West Los Angeles, your district, Vill Rosenthal, and I want to talk about a slightly different issue today, and that's the issue of parking enforcement, and in particular, the parking appeals of enforcement in Los Angeles. I think... I think tickets are a regular part of life here in LA. I understand this is a huge source of income for the city, and I think there's a few important things to keep in mind on this issue. One of them being that it affects poor people probably disproportionately than others since it is kind of like a flat tax across the board. Also, student areas and people who rent their apartments instead of living in their homes also bear a higher chance of getting tickets. So that being said, I think that there should be a fair appeals process for if you do get a ticket. And as it operates now, there's a fundamental problem that is really hurting those who feel that they've wrongly been getting a ticket from getting a fair hearing in it. Now, I'm not sure if you guys have ever fought a parking ticket, but it's quite a daunting task. And so if you think you, if you start this process, you do feel strongly about it and you probably do have a good claim. Right now, you do what's called an administrative hearing. And to do that, it says on the parking enforcement website, you must pay your ticket before that you start this process. But unfortunately, once you pay your ticket, your case is closed and there's no more hearing available to you. Now, normally after your hearing, there's one more chance for appeal. That's to the LA court system where you have a neutral hearing officer and a judge that's heard very quickly right before the normal tickets. And this process is completely shut off because you need a letter from a hearing officer before you can go to the judge. And so as it stands right now, there is no clear route of appeal to get to any neutral officer. Thank you.
I know Mr. Rosendal will have a staff to speak with you. Susie Martinez?
Good morning. My name is Susie Martinez and I am a Santa Monica College student. I am here to speak on behalf of the South Central farmers. Mr. Rosendal, we've all witnessed the passion with which you've taken the defense of the residents of Lincoln Place. Longtime residents of the place are being evicted from their standpoint, and injustice is being done to them. Though the new developer of the property is being operated well within the law, you have had the vision to see beyond the letter of the law to the moral and ethical implications of the eviction and thus have championed their cause. We of the South Central Farmers Support Committee applaud you for that. We sure could use a champion ourselves. We sure could use someone to stand up and recognize the error that you've committed when you agreed to sell the city-owned land to Mr. Horowitz at a price far below its market value. We have been presenting our case before these chambers for many, for more than two years, yet all we've got in return are repeated platitudes from council members to complacent to come out from behind the rope of the court. Mr. Huesar, Mr. Rosendal, and Mr. Winston, you are not tainted from the residue of this wrong decision. Could a champion emerge from amongst you? Will one of you step out from behind the closed session of last week and take a stand in defense of the largest urban farm in the United States? Will one of you step forward and speak for the people of the Eastern City 9 who suffer from some of the most contaminated air in the basin? Mr. Smith, the work you have done for your constituents in fighting to keep the district from becoming the city's dump is admirable. In view of the fact that the council members of City 9 would rather destroy green space and add to the contamination, couldn't you lend some of your expertise to help us save this green space? I would hope that the city would want to be remembered for preserving 14 acres of green land.
Thank you. If I can ask you to conclude.
Save the South Central Farm. We need your support.
Thank you very much, Ms. Martinez. Our next speaker, Felicia Ford. Welcome back, Ms. Ford.
Good morning, Felicia Ford, president of Woodlawn Memorial Park Foundation. I was offended by two of your council members, and I want to say that the Lord God that I serve, I must come respectfully and decent and in order, and I'm a woman of class, not confusion. You know, Daddy always said, be very careful of the man that comes with a pair of bridges with nothing in it. Mama said also, stay away from the woman that belongs to the do-nothing club. Woodlawn Cemetery is in Compton, but Evergreen Cemetery is in this city in the 14th district. I want to say to you also, Mama and Daddy broke bread with the Gonzalases, the Rodriguezes, the Lopez, the Garcias. They don't necessarily come in that order. And I want to say, I come here to speak. You don't have to listen to me. I'm talking to your public. I'm asking for assistance because Mr. Wong and Benton Lee desecrated thousands of our family members. I am the president of the corporation and the foundation. My membership is 3,100. If you've ever fallen to your knees of being distraught, of going to your loved one cemetery and someone else is standing there saying, that's my loved one in that grave. Have you ever seen or walked into a cemetery and you find that the remains are thrown in the trash can? In this city, not just in Compton, I don't come with anger, but when your city council tells my board member and me that I'm wasting your airtime. I don't have cable, haven't had it in six years. I don't know what Channel 35 is, and I don't go home and see myself on TV. But I want to say this to everyone here. You must love with your heart, and I came with nothing other than to tell you what is going on in this city, but respect me and respect how I come. Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
And we do. Thank you very much. Dele Alamein, please, followed by Rose Luhan. Dele Alamein, sir, Dele Alamein and Rose Luhan, to be followed by Samuel Sanchez. After that.
So, members of the City Hall, in the name of civil rights, for the sake of human rights, I ask you to please listen to the plea of the South Central farmers. Particularly today, I want to make direct appeal to the mayor of LA and to Councilwoman Jan Perry for both of them to show leadership. Beyond, beyond the power play that we are witnessing, beyond the attempt to cause polarity and tension among the communities of South Central, there are grandmothers, there are mothers, there are single mothers who want to go on with the peaceful cultivation of the land on 41st and Alameda. Bernard Parks was the police chief. He could seek information regarding the impact that that farm has had in lessening of violence in that area. What the farmers are asking for is a place to subsidize their sources of nutrition, is a place for them to continue the cultivation of their medicinal plants so as to offset the deficit in their medical insurance. It is a place for their children to fight obesity because it's safe and green space for them to run around and to eat healthy meals. This is the plea that people have been coming with before you for three years. I think it is time for the City Hall to listen to this plea. I want to thank the members of the City Hall who have showed some respect in listening to members of the South Central Farmers Support Committee and to the farmers when they come here to appear before you. I know that these are low-income earners, but it is very, very possible that if the mayor wants to act forthrightly and if Councilwoman Jan Perry wants to assist in this process, that it will bring to an end the precariousness to which these 350 families have been subjected. On Wednesday, in this City Hall, on Wednesday in this City Hall, councilman cardinals raised an issue regarding the South Central farmers.
And I know you're raising an issue.
Let us cut away this theater, move forward to save the South Central farmers.
Thank you, Mr. President.
And I hope that we act very soon and very properly.
We appreciate your testimony. Rose Luhan?
Good afternoon, City Council members. Ladies and gentlemen, there were some beautiful presentations given today, thanking many people for the services that they have provided for the community. Unfortunately, I haven't, I have yet to hear from District 9 thanking the people of the South Central Farm for all the services that they provide for their community as well. They also provide workshops, health fairs, art classes for students, educational tours, all free of charge, might I add. And they should be commended for everything that they have done for that community because they are also part of the community and they feel it. I would like to take this opportunity, since, Madam Perry, you are here, to invite you to come to the South Central Farm. I realize that, and probably you have not been to the South Central Farm, so I'm going to take this opportunity to personally invite you and personally give you a tour of the South Central Farm, should you come this Sunday. And that goes for any of the other council members who have not yet been there. I would also like to invite you to come. As far as soccer fields, soccer fields are beautiful. Our students do need extra recreational locations. There is actually a soccer field that's supposed to be located on Slauson in Maine, I believe. And I have some pictures. I really don't know what the issue is, why it has not been developed, and I'll go ahead and I would like to give these pictures to the council members for review. So you could see, there's no soccer field here. Yet, people are pushing to have a soccer field placed on 41st and Alameda. I'd like to know why this land hasn't been developed. Why is there no soccer field there at this time? Please, I urge you, City Council members.
Thank you.
Take heed of this.
Appreciate you.
Save the South Central Farm. Thank you.
Thank you. We're about 25 minutes over our prescribed time, so I'm going to reduce the speaker time to a minute with, so we can hear from a few more, even though we're over. Samuel Sanchez, Gretchen Seemers, Tracy Larkin, Daniel French, and Candido Maras are our final five speakers. Mr. Sanchez, welcome.
My name is Samuel Sanchez. I live in the San Pedro area and I go to school at El Camino College, and I do work, volunteer work with Food Not Bombs that serves impoverished people all over, and especially in this downtown area, one of the wealthiest areas in the city. Can't even see the top of the building, but you can see 12 homeless people sleeping underneath them. The city has shown time again in the past that it doesn't care or that people of lower income are negligible and get swept aside when big decisions about money need to be made. I think we all know this, and that's just the name of the game. And I think Jan Perry probably knows this very well, dealing with the Community Redevelopment Agency, who's in charge of gentrifying a lot of areas, and she personally has a lot of areas picked out, and one of them happens to be right where the South Central Farm is located in her 9th district, along with a few other areas. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Thank you very much, Mr. Sanchez.
Save the South Central Farm.
Thank you. Yes, hold on, before we start, Ms. Seemers, Mr. Wesson? Yes, please. Please.
And I don't know what the rules are. It just pains me to listen to people refer to us directly by name. I mean, is there, in the assembly, we didn't allow that to occur. I respect their rights to come and say whatever it is they need to say, because, I mean, next month, it could be 300 people mentioning your name.
Sure, absolutely.
I think that we respect what it is they want to do, and they need to respect the members of this council who are elected. So using our names does not make me gravitate to their side.
Okay. Mr. City Attorney, is there any information?
They do have the legal ability to refer to you by name because you're elected representatives. However, if they do get into threatening or that sort of area, then they can be escorted out if they are considered threatening.
Thank you for that, and thank you for that point, Mr. Wesson, as well. Ms. Seemers is our next speaker.
Thank you. Good morning, council members. My name is Gretchen Seemers. I live in CD 13. I'm a former council staff member and currently a graduate student in urban policy at USC. There is an interesting precedent in this case not far from here. The industrial brownfield site of Nada Cornfield had a similar fate as that of the South Central Farm. It was going to become warehousing. After reaching a creative agreement with the landowner and the city, the community won the battle when the state purchased the park and neighboring Taylor Yard in 2001 for $60 million. That price is telling of the value of open space in Los Angeles. You may not see the nation's largest urban farm off of the freeway on your way to work in the morning as you made the cornfields, but it is there, thriving, providing sustainable food sources and greening the city as Mayor Villarosa proclaims is his intention. I'd also like to make you aware of the academic and professional attention that this matter is getting. There are even international conferences at which the fate of the nation's largest urban farm is at the forefront of issues. Please do your best to save the South Central Farm.
Thank you, Tracy. Appreciate your testimony. Tracy Larkins, and Daniel French, and Candido Maras.
Hi, thank you. This is my second time here. I know they've all been coming for the last several years. I don't think I'll come back again after today because the main person that we want to talk to, Jan Perry, who is in charge of the district where this land is located, is not really particularly courteous to the people that are here. And I'm wondering, why are you more concerned about a soccer field than a farm that produces food? I mean, you could, it's really important to have a place for people to play, but we should have that also. It shouldn't be taken away from where food is being grown to feed families. This is a city full of pavement. Why would you want to put more buildings and pavement on top of a beautiful farm that has these amazing trees on it already that have been growing there for years? You cannot replace that. Once you take them down, you can't move them to another location. And Janice Han, thank you so much for the offer of the four polluted acres. We should make it a superfund site and clean it up and make that a soccer field. That would be great.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Daniel French.
Hi, thank you. I'd just like to know for the record that I really don't appreciate having just a minute for two minutes. I understand the technicalities of that, but basically, I had a speech prepared, there's not enough time to finish it. I want to connect with what the previous policy student mentioned. I've traveled to Venezuela and attended national, like, an international conference on urban planning, and these projects are happening all throughout the world in Colombia, Venezuela, Brazil, and Chicago, as well as here. And this was presented at that international conference on urban farming. My, last Friday, I came here and presented over 800 letters from faculty, staff, and students at Azusa Pacific University. The students in all of Los Angeles are watching on how the city council and how the mayor of Los Angeles will respond to these people's struggle and LA's future kind of vision for how it plans to run our communities. Please, do what you can, be honest.
Thank you, Mr. French. Thank you for your understanding. Candido Maras?
Good afternoon, Mr. President, council members. Today's a good day to live in Los Angeles. Article, "I'm Telling You to Speed Up Recycle Goal." Mayor Promises He'll Curb 70% of Cities Trash by 2015. That's great, but I think in this city, we can do that by 2010. I want to thank the council for last week voting to divert 600 tons a day of trash that will be going to other landfills instead of the Sunshine Canyon. I would like to thank Councilman Greg Smith because the Renew LA Plan is a format for us to take a look at for long-term solutions to finally ending the landfills. And let's remember some, another councilwoman, remember Ruth Glanter? She was also a big advocate of recycling, so we want to thank her because she did a lot for that. Mary Edwards was an activist in our area, Councilman Smith, and I would hope that someday we can bring her before the council and honor her for her hard work because she was a great, great Los Angelen. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Candido. That closes our public comment for today. If we can, please, as a first order of business, send 3 and 4 and 36 forthwith. And Mr. Zion?
Brief introduction.
Sure, absolutely. Mr. Zion with an introduction.
Ivy Academia Charter School, if you'll please stand. We recognize students from Ivy Academia in the back there. I know you've been patient. Thank you. Welcome to City Council. One of our charter schools in the 3rd Council District. Thank you. Sorry for the delay, but the public comment was taking place. Wave to your moms and dads and everybody out there in the San Fernando Valley. All right. We love you too.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zion, for that.
Back to your teachers.
If we can, yes, Mr. Smith?
I'm being sent forthwith, please.
Let's go. Forthwith with number nine as well. Okay. Let's return to item number one, please.
Item number one is confirmation of Alina M. Book Day to the Environmental Affairs Commission.
Thank you for your patience as well. I'd like to recognize the Chair of our Energy and Environment Committee, Ms. Perry.
Excuse me, I'm coughing. Mr. Ms. Bodki came before the committee. She has an extensive environmental background. I had one concern which had been addressed by the city attorney, so committee is in full support and I'd like to move forward on this.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to be heard on this one? Mr. Carrados?
Thank you, Council President. When it comes to the environment, unfortunately, in this world, we end up having kind of like two worlds when it comes to the environmental quality. like to see happen as a commissioner.
Thank you, council member. Again, my name is Alina Bookday and I'm really honored to have the opportunity to be considered for commission appointment. And a lot of my background deals actually with open space, park development, and looking at how communities grow. I come with an extensive planning background that looks actually at the, kind of the totality of, of the impact on the environment and the kinds of decisions, both at a policy level as well as an educational outreach level, that need to happen with respect to making informed decisions. So as, as a part of my, if I am approved to sit on the commission, I would like to, one of the things I would like to do is to do, to reinstate or continue the, a lot of the educational outreach to communities around the city of Los Angeles that helps kind of empower and educate folks about what they can do with respect to the environment, and then work collaboratively with other commissions to try to see how we can collaborate between departments and come up with recommendations to the council for consideration. But I, a lot of my, I'm hoping that my planning background will actually be very helpful in trying to bring together the, some of the levels of complexities dealing with the environment.
Thank you very much, Alina. And also, on a personal note, my wife and I thought we made up a name when we named our daughter Alina, who is now seven. Obviously, we didn't. It's a wonderful name and I'm just going to share with you tonight, when this is on television, I'm going to get Alina in front of the television and make sure she sees this portion, so I can get her to inspire to do good things like you're doing and say, tell her, see, Alinas are very smart and they do wonderful things and they give back to the community. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Our next speaker is Ms. Gru.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I just wanted to stand, rise in support of your nomination. We had you before the Energy and Environment Committee and talked about your extensive background, both in planning and, I think, in park space and the importance of the fact that we are so park poor in this city, no matter what district you live in, and how we can be strategic about purchasing of parcels to create that open space and how particularly open space and the planting of trees, whatever it may be, is going to help us in our environment, not only with what we see, but what we breathe and how we live. And I think the Environmental Affairs Commission is one of those commissions that I think I may have mentioned in committee as well that was developed, created when I worked for Mayor Bradley, and to put a spotlight, to focus on the issues that are important in our environment. And so look forward to working with you as a new commissioner there with your expertise. And so, thank you for your willingness to serve. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Tell me about your background specifically that suggests that you feel you can take on this challenge.
I'd be happy to. My background, currently I work at the Trust for Public Land. It's a national land conservation organization. I'm a project manager, and so I do a lot of work with respect to primarily real estate negotiations, outreach to community members, and work very closely with a number of both public and private entities to try to create more parks in park deficient areas. I also, my graduate degree is in community and regional planning, and my emphasis was in natural resource planning, so have a kind of watershed background, watershed planning background, which I think dovetails very nicely into the commission work. And in my previous capacity, I actually served on a couple of open space and trails committees when I lived in New Mexico prior to coming to Los Angeles. So I've also been involved in recommending policies to elected officials, governing boards, that help hopefully with improving the goals and objectives of plans, so.
Well, that's really great stuff to hear because frankly, you know, we need your leadership. I know in my district with the mountains and the trails there and with the wetlands and the situations there and the ocean, all the strength that you bring to the picture will be of great value to us. Just one question, I don't know if you can do anything about it, is the global warming is becoming a tremendous alarming reality. I heard on the news this morning that our low-lying areas like Florida, like my area Venice, and all these other places, conceivably with the continuing melting of the ice caps, which seems to be accelerating, is going to cause a huge devastation, Bangladesh, on our earth. Any thoughts of what you can do? I know it's a small step on your commission compared to the international picture, but help me on that, global warming.
I am actually hoping to educate myself more on the global warming issue, and in fact, this Sunday, Vice President Al Gore is going to be coming to Los Angeles to preview his film on global warming, and so I'm going to be attending that and hope to stay afterwards to be able to talk with other folks about, you know, what can be done. So part of it is, it's a, it's a topic that personally holds a lot of interest for me, and my thoughts are that after we try to educate ourselves on the commission and find out what the parameters are within the department that we work with and see if there's other ways we can collaborate with other departments within the city, we could come back and make some proposals to the council. So, but I'm, I'm going to the, to the discussion on Sunday, so I hope it will help with my own understanding of what can be done at a local level.
Thank you. We look forward to that.
Thank you.
The World Out of Balance, which was a book he did, I interviewed him on that.
Oh, fantastic.
Would have been great if he got elected president. We'd be in better shape than we are today. Thanks. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Labonge?
Thank you very much, and I appreciate what you just said. You answered many things that I had thoughts of, and I appreciate the work you do with the Trust for Public Land to look at that. Have you met our superintendent of the Angeles National Force, Jody Naaman?
Not yet.
Go out and meet her. She's a wonderful person. She's responsible for the busiest national force in the country in the Angeles, which we sometimes forget, but it's a great backdrop to the city. Call me if I ever could help you. Thank you for your service to the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, council members, and thank you for serving, Alina. Very proud to have you in the northeast Los Angeles area, and I know you're going to do a great job. So with that, let's prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Welcome aboard, Commissioner. Next item, please.
Next item is item number 20, and that was called Special Substitute Motion Has Been Distributed.
That's been circulated, Mr. Parks. We have the substitute motion on 20 now. Did you want to say anything on that or?
No, no, it's circulated.
Okay. All right. Let's prepare the roll on that item and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
That is approved. And next we have item 40 called Special Card From the Public, Ms. Sylvia Hawkins. If you'd like to come forward on item number 40, please. Welcome. We have two minutes.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Sylvia Hawkins. To the Management Board for the Use of Oil Waste bins and to Alice Ponder, Department Councilman Alice Ponder, with the new technology as you were talking about earlier, dealing with electricity, toilets, plumbing, they are really losing in the market. It is a way that we must go back to the old route of flushing toilets where we will win. Please be aware of Hawk 8 military that is watching and searching all BFI and WECC companies, legal or illegal immigrants that are here in California that are trying to steal my private park and earring under my apartment at 1906 Third Street, Apartment 129. Be aware, all people, public people, I'm protected, and whatever race you are, you will be killed under without any grave sight needed. It is illegal to go under and steal, now back out to give to your bishop, to your council, to your government, to your food or your port and pay anything. We are not going to be stealing concerning the Merck Park area or north. No one can live free, whether you live in the Merck Park Division, it's closed down. It is not run by Louis Farrakhan. If your leader died, whether it's Chevron, whether it's Prime Minister Blair, whether it's Charles Taylor, they left bills. Thank you very much. My name is President Sylvia Hawkins.
Thank you, President, and we appreciate your comments on our used oil recycling program. That closes public comment for this. Anybody wishing to be heard? If not, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
That is approved. You have any housekeeping?
Yes, council has motions for posting and referral.
Okay, those are posted and referred.
The excuses on the desk, Councilmember Zine requests to be excused Wednesday, April 5th to leave at 11:15 for city business that meets council policy.
Okay, Mr. Zine is excused.
And also, he requests to be excused June 14th, 16th, and 28th, and September 29th. Those are all for city business and they all meet council policy.
Okay, those excuses are granted.
Councilmember Perry requests to be excused Tuesday, April 4th to leave at 12:30 for city business that meets council policy.
Ms. Perry is excused.
And Councilmember Cardenas requests to be excused Wednesday, May 31st for city business that meets council policy.
And Mr. Cardenas is excused.
And that clears the desk.
Okay. Colleagues, just to begin our announcements, and I think many of you have seen this, but this is our new City Council Gazette. We have it printed in the back and has, it highlights activities in each one of the council districts that each council office is doing both legislatively and in their own district, so that is available for the public and online. Make sure you, you get yourselves a copy of that. Other announcements? Mr. Cardenas?
Thank you very much, Council President. As was announced earlier in the week, and we adjourn the memory of former Assemblyman Marco Antonio Fireball, I just wanted to announce the memorial services will begin Sunday with a rosary, that is Sunday night, March 26th, in two days, at 7:00 PM at Our Lady of Queen of the Angels Church at 535 North Main Street. And then on Monday, the memorial mass will be Monday, March 27th, in three days from now, at 9:00 AM at the Cathedral of Our Lady of Los Angeles at 555 West Temple Street. That's the big cathedral downtown. Again, these are the services for Marco Antonio Fireball, former Assemblyman and good friend of the community of Los Angeles and also all of California and this country. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Ms. Gru?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to announce that tomorrow at 11 o'clock in the Tahunga part of my district, we are going to have a grand reopening of the Bolton Hall Park. We were able to spend close to $600,000 in Prop K dollars to make some much-needed improvements to that park there, and a special thank you to the individuals, Lloyd Hitt particularly, who has made that possible. And then at 3 o'clock, we will be doing a groundbreaking at the corner of Foothill and Commerce for a new development that's going to be a catalyst for that community. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Labonge?
Members, it's the first weekend of spring and the mustard is popping real high in the trails at Griffith Park. Courage everyone to go out, take a good hike, whether it's in Griffith Park or Kenny Hahn State Park or Allegiant Park or anywhere they can to take a good walk. It's a beautiful weekend to take a walk, visit the Los Angeles Zoo and see some of the great exhibits out there, as we improve the zoo every day, and take a ride in the historic battleground at Griffith Park. Everybody have a good first weekend of spring.
Thank you very much. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have several announcements. Number one, tomorrow, the Crenshaw Christian Center will have their quarterly community task force that will start at the church facility at 8:00 AM and go through noon and will be cleaning up the surrounding areas. That's at 83rd and Vermont. Also, on March 29th, the Community and Public Sector Expo at USC, it's Wednesday, the 29th. Their primary task is to educate USC graduates and undergraduates as to types of activities and jobs that may be available. Also, LAPD and LA Fire Department is having a woman recruitment expo tomorrow, the 25th, 8 to 4, at Allegiant Park. And then we've met Mrs. Singleton here in the council, but she's having the Second Annual March in memory of her son Stevie, and that would be Sunday, March 25th. It will start at 4610 South St. Andrews, and this is in memory of her son who was killed in gang violence two years ago. And then also, we have the World Airport will have their Second Annual Business Opportunity Fair on March 29th, 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM at the Proud Bird, in which they're inviting vendors and contractors to come in and learn how to do business with LA World Airport. And then finally, we have a youth center and academic and cultural enrichment program that's the, for 2006, it's at USC, and applications are due for April 1st, and contact number is 310-670-8500 for youth interested in being a part of the Academic and Cultural Enrichment Academy.
Thank you. Other announcements, colleagues? Mr. Rosendahl?
I have two of them. Tomorrow morning at 10:00 AM, we're going to rededicate the Will Rogers Park in the northern part of our district. They refurbished his house that he used to hang out with, and he was a real social commentary guy for the whole country and the world, and we're honored in the 11th District to have his house there and Will Rogers State Park, and to take Tom's Labonge's point with Spring Sprung and all, there's a nice place to go up there and enjoy the mountains and the wonderful restored home of Will Rogers. 10 o'clock tomorrow morning.
Mr. Rosendahl, I think Mr. Rogers, one of my favorite quotes is that he said he belonged to no organized political party. He was a Democrat.
Yeah, that's right. And that, that was, we were just talking about what did Will Rogers famous quotes were. There were a lot of them, but he used to take that lasso and move it around and look into people's eyes and say the most outrageous things that were fun and positive. And so, he's the kind of emulation that all of us here at the council can use as our mentor as we continue the work we do. Tomorrow, 10. But also, 2 o'clock tomorrow, the Mar Vista Park Playground will have its dedication again, and I'm going to be cutting a ribbon and being real happy, and all my folks in Mar Vista will be there at 2 o'clock tomorrow afternoon. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Other announcements, colleagues? Other announcements? Mr. Padilla? Is this announcement or?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that, Mr. Padilla.
Mr. President, colleagues, I know, I know it's all over the radio and television, particularly Spanish language radio and television, and we haven't directly addressed it, although there's been a committee this morning, the International Governmental Relations Committee this morning, consideration of proposed federal legislation that is described as immigration reform, although I think a lot of people in this country would beg to differ as to the approach towards addressing immigration in this country. A couple of days ago, we heard of the passing of our friend Marco Fireball, we're preparing for his services this Sunday and Monday. But it is impossible, I think, to ignore the marches and demonstrations that are scheduled for tomorrow and Sunday in Los Angeles, one which will actually conclude on the lawn just outside this building. Not sure if a lot of council members are scheduled or planning on participating, but I recall very vividly the numbers of folks who came and marched and spoke and demonstrated back in 1994 when Proposition 187 was on the ballot. There's a lot of speculation, people guesstimating that this weekend could conceivably see larger numbers of people assembled. A lot of organizations involved in organizing the demonstration and turning people out, trying to educate people as to the potential impact of a lot of the proposed federal legislation. I just think it'd be a mistake for this week to conclude, for this council session to conclude without an appropriate acknowledgement of the potential magnitude of this weekend's events. I know we've, we've been talking about it for some time now, but particularly recently, about the various quote-unquote reforms that are offered. If any city in America has a stake in immigration reform, if any city in America has a stake as to how immigrants are treated now and in the future, it is Los Angeles. Forty-two percent of our city are immigrants from elsewhere. And so, I just wanted to put that on everybody's radar, whether you participate or not. I think it's appropriate to acknowledge, and as the elected leaders from our respective districts, I think we can fully anticipate and should prepare for being asked questions, being asked to lead discussions and even lead thoughts and interpretations of what the activities of this upcoming weekend really mean.
Thank you, Mr. Zine.
Thank you. Mr. Padilla brought up a very important point. There's a number of students that have walked out of school today because of this issue, and I just want to reemphasize that the National League of Cities has a task force on immigration
There's a number of students that have walked out of school today because of this issue. And I just want to reemphasize that the National League of Cities has a task force on immigration reform, and I've been named the chair of that committee. No one, no one on that committee and no one National League of Cities is stating deportation. No one is pushing roundups. What we are looking for is a legal path to the opportunity to live in America. We're looking at the opportunities to help people, not to hurt people, to help families, not to hurt families. So, the issue that people are going to be protesting throughout this country, leading by the City of Los Angeles, with our motions, our resolutions, our concern, is to help the people here from all over the world. And if you want to start deporting people, do we start with the Chinese, the Japanese, the Vietnamese, the Irish, the English, the Canadians, the Lebanese? Where do we start? National League of Cities is not going to do that, so I just want to emphasize, we support free speech, we support peaceful demonstrations, but we have a position that is held not only here but throughout the country to help legalization of the people from throughout the world. Thank you.
Before we all get-
Can I stop before Mr. City Attorney cut me off?
Yeah, before we all get in an open session into a policy discussion, I would just remind folks that this is time for announcements, please. Mr. Rosendahl?
I was at the National League of Cities, as were eight others, with Dennis Zion, making it 10 of us, and he gave a report before the committee, and I sat there and listened to the report about immigration. He didn't call them illegal aliens like a bug. He called them undocumented immigrants, and he frankly was inclusionary, and it was a great honor to be with you at that point.
Again, if we can try to keep things to announcements right now, colleagues. Mr. Reyes?
Announcements, one I just hope we can support, and thank you for your support on the resolution, but I just also want to stand and recognize the spirit, the undying effort of never giving up and congratulating the Bruins for the win last night. Thank you.
It was quite a finish. It was quite a finish, yes. We will agendize that next week, I believe, the next game for that. And, sorry, Mr. Labonge?
And I know this, we have a wonderful holiday this Monday.
Caesar Chavez holiday this Monday, which is coming up, of course, recognizing the great civil rights leader, Caesar Chavez. There'll be a number of events, including the traditional Caesar Chavez Walk on Monday, and we invite folks to take it as a day of service, which it has evolved into not just a day of commemoration but of service as well. Any other announcements, colleagues? Now, can I please ask everybody to rise for adjournings motions? May, Ms. Gruel?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Dorothy May Dillon Hoskins. She passed away on March 13th, 2006. She was 78 years old when she passed away of emphysema and congestive heart failure in her home in Fullerton. Dorothy was born on May 16th, 1927, in Grimes, Iowa, and later moved to Des Moines and then to San Diego. She married Clark Hoskins in 1943, three weeks after they met, and lived in San Diego until 1962 before moving to Fullerton. Dorothy lovingly took care of her family by leading scout troops, heading PTA programs, and as an expert seamstress, made her children's Halloween costumes, dance dresses, and cheerleading outfits. Dorothy was a wonderful listener and taught her children strong traditional values. Her Irish heritage meant a lot to Dorothy, and St. Patrick's Day would always find her house festooned in green. She loved "Danny Boy" and Gaelic blessing that begins, "May the road rise up to meet you; may the wind be always at your back." Now, her family likes to think that she truly has the wind at her back. She is survived by her husband, Clark Hoskins, her son, Michael, and daughters Cindy Taylor and Terry Gonzalez, her brother James Dillon, her grandchildren Christopher, Jeff, and Reuben, and her great-grandchildren Sarah, Delaney, Peyton, Alyssa, Rebecca, and Patrick. Her grandson is Reuben Gonzalez from the Controller's Office and asked us to adjourn in memory of his grandmother today, so I'd ask that we adjourn in her memory. Thank you.
Thank you. All members on that. Ms. Hahn?
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask that we adjourn our meeting today in memory of James Woods, who passed away on Monday at 70 years old. He was very active in our Watts community. He started the Studio Watts Workshop a few months before the Watts riots 40 years ago. The workshop provided training in the visual arts, music, dance, drama, and writing for kids in the Watts community. For years, he's worked to bring art to the residents of Watts, and most recently, he was involved with the community arts program for seniors, and he also coordinated the annual Watts Artist Chalk in Project, where artists literally drew on the sidewalk in chalk, and it was a very interesting event. He's survived by his sister Ida, his brother Freeman, his son Norman, his daughter Sharon, and two grandson. I'd also like us to adjourn today in memory of George Torrey, Greg Torrey, who passed away March 17th at the age of 79 in San Pedro. He was born in Croatia, and he was a 60-year resident of San Pedro. Mr. Torrey had been the plant supervisor for Starkist Foods for 35 years. He and his sons bought AMP Seafood, a retail seafood store, which he helped run for 10 years. He was an active member of the Dalmatian American Club. He's survived by his wife of 55 years, Catherine, sons Vince and Gregory, daughter Phyllis, brother Josco, three grandchildren, and four great-grandchildren. One more, you know, we had the San Pedro High School kids in today, and I told them when I took them in the back that we were going to adjourn our meeting today in memory of one of their classmates, Kyle Edward Pickle, who tragically was killed Saturday night in an auto accident very close to my home. He was 17, he was a student at San Pedro High School, and he's survived by his grandmother, Rose Park, his sister Camayo, and her son Anthony, Uncle Albert, his wife Connie, and their three children, Uncle Michael, his wife Monica, and their two children. And a time of remembrance will be held tomorrow morning, Saturday, at 9:00 AM at Mary Star of the Sea in San Pedro. His friends have erected, you know, one of those roadside memorials, which has been growing every day, and any time of the day or night, there's usually anywhere from four to 10 to 20 kids who are gathering around that memorial. A piece of the car, you know, is still there, so it's a very sobering reminder, particularly for young people, that life is short, you know, we're not immortal, and that we really have to take every day and consider how precious it is. So, let's remember Kyle Edward Pickle today when we adjourn.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Labonge?
Thank you, members. I'd like to ask we adjourn in memory of Jaclyn Dale Hawks. She was born here in Los Angeles, attended Dorsey High School, and was a wonderful representative in customer service for the Department of Water and Power. She supported many charitable organizations and was beloved by many of those customers as she served the DWP. She's survived by her husband Hi, her daughters Monique Claus, Robin Alexander, and Lisa Dickens. Additionally, I'd like to ask that Ms. Gruel join with me in memory of Estelle Bush. Many of you know her. She came down every year. She was an activist, lived to be 93 beautiful years. She was involved with the arts program in the North Hollywood area. Estelle Bush was a wonderful woman who inspired many of the art programs in the North Hollywood District. And finally, I'd like to ask all members to join me in adjourned, and Elena M. Milenikoff, Adina Katz's mother. As you know, she was a great educator and advocate for social and political causes. For over 25 years, she worked as a social worker for Los Angeles County Child Welfare System, placing children in their foster homes and working with children and their families throughout. She was loved by many. She lived in the Claremont area. She served the Claremont Unified School District for programs in Claremont in the east end of Los Angeles County. Her hus- she survived her husband of 57 years, Adair, their daughters Dahlia, Adina, and Alyssa. I ask we adjourn in memory of Alina Milenikoff.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Are there adjournings motions, Mr. Reyes?
On behalf of Councilmember Jan Perry, I'd like the council to adjourn today in memory of a longtime resident of District 9, Frank John Harris. Frank was born July 18th, 1911, in Plain Dealing, Louisiana. Came to California in the early 1940s, moved to Los Angeles in 1949. His passing at the age of 94, Frank was the oldest living man on his street and of his community. Frank was a very friendly gentleman, very talkative, who would always go out of his way for people. He was a great father, a very active, very active in community and church. I'd like to join his family in mourning for his loss. Frank is survived by three daughters, Karima Ali, Jeanette Delaney, and Rosetta Williams, and a host of grandchildren.
Thank you. And I know, Mr. Reyes, you want to take a moment of silence as well for Oscar Romero, monseñor. This is the anniversary of his death, if you wanted to add anything.
Yes, I just wanted to, this tribute is the 26th anniversary of his passing. He was killed by death squads at the foot of his church, fighting for the poor, fighting for liberty for his country. Today, we have a whole host of organizations out in the quad conducting a tribute ceremony to his memory. And in light of today's issues of how we want to be punitive to the most vulnerable in our country through our immigration laws, it's very appropriate that we acknowledge him and have a moment of silence in his memory.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I request that we adjourn in the memory of a kickboxing champion and a World Black Belt founding member, Mr. Howard Jackson. Mr. Jackson passed away on March 7th. He is survived by his two sons, Howard Jackson Jr., Mr. Jeremy Jackson, and his daughter, Amber Jackson, and a host of friends and relatives will miss him dearly.
Thank you. Ms. Zion?
Mr. President, I request we adjourn in memory of Deputy Pierre Bane, Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. The front page of the Animal Valley Press has the photo of the tragedy that occurred. Deputy Pierre Bane, 45 years of age, a 15-year veteran of the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, was killed Thursday when his motorcycle crashed during a red light and siren response in Lancaster. Motorcycle hit a tree, was thrown from the motorcycle, suffered massive injuries. Stationed at the Sheriff's Lancaster Facility, he'll be greatly missed by his family and friends. Survived by wife and three teenage daughters from her previous marriage. Deputy Pierre Bane, may he rest in peace.
All members on that. Thank you very much, Mr. Zion. We will next meet, colleagues, next Tuesday. That is March the 28th at 10:00 AM. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. This meeting of the Los Angeles City Council is adjourned. Thank you all very much, colleagues.